He was a part of the team and he's been with the district since he was five years old. And he started playing athletics since he was five years old. The coaches used prohibited criteria such as off-season attendance, which violates Michigan High School rules. He used criteria like experience, which conflicts with the district's philosophy, that all athletes should have the fair chance to prove themselves each season. An injured athlete that injured himself was put on the team and actually put on the roster without even being evaluated. And that spot could have been my son's spot. So at this point, I'm very concerned, not just for my son, is that the policies and the procedures from the student-athlete and parent handbook was violated and they did not follow it properly. If the student made the team without even having to try out, that's in violations of the procedures and the policies. And I'm not just here for my son, I'm here for all the students that have to deal with this and go through these things because it's not fair. He's been a part of the district, he's been a part of the athletic program for many years. And it was more than just athletics. He built a brotherhood with a lot of these young men. And at the end of the day, my goal is for him to get back on the varsity team because he's qualified and he's very talented to do so. And in the meeting today, they mentioned, not the athletic director, but both coaches said that if it was another spot open on JV and varsity, that my son would amaze the team. But if you have an injured player that can't play and did not get evaluated and don't have a rubric on him, that should be his spot. He got cut on last Friday. And on Saturday, what happened was that, what happened was that, once he got cut, he reached out and asked, does he have a spot on junior varsity? Because he played junior varsity last year.
You have forty-five seconds, Mr. Horton.
So the junior varsity coach told him, they'll wait and they'll talk to him on Saturday. To make a long story short, at the end of the day, they changed the criteria on that Saturday. They're no longer having juniors play down on junior varsity. But they also allow freshmen to play up. So I just feel that's unfair. And I just want you guys to really think about and considering putting my son back on the varsity basketball team.
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Thank you for your time.
My name is Mike Love Senick. I live here in Schwartz Creek. My daughter goes to Elms Road and my son goes to the middle school. I just had a couple of things to mention regarding, I think, the superintendent report. Superintendent Kitchen and Principal Manning did a great job putting on the Halloween party at Elms Road. All of the kids, if you're not familiar, all the kids get in the gym. Mr. Kitchen is the DJ. They have a ton of fun wearing their costumes, doing line dances and costume competitions and things. So Principal Manning and Mr. Kitchen went way out of their own way to do that. And they should be commended for that. I see IXL on the list here. Principal Manning and Mr. Love, a teacher at Elms Road, and MTSS, the MTSS group at Elms Road, did a great job getting IXL ready for the elementary school. At the parent-teacher conferences, they had like a little sheet and you could get your sheet stamped for going to different stations. And one of the stations was like a three-minute video, which of course is the limit of any video that anybody wants to watch now, right? And Mr. Love went through how to do IXL, how to use it for your student. And I think that's going to help a lot. So again, he should be committed as well as Ms. Manning and the MTSS group for putting that together. And then I wanted to share one other thing, and I don't know if this is related to the agenda or not. My son is in Entree Maker course at the middle school. It's a STEAM course taught by Ms. Swales and I think Ms. Bilby helps out. Sorry, Ms. Bilby. And that students learn how to make things and learn how to design things, like STLs and 3D prints and stuff. And the goal of the course is for them to start a business later. But this project right here, they actually learned how to frame a wall with balsa wood. They diagrammed it out, the header for the door, that you know, all of the studs and things. And then they have a working light that they installed. I'll see if I can do it. So this stuff is things that I see him bring home. I'm like, wow, you guys are really making a difference in our students' lives. He told me, my son is in eighth grade, he'll be in high school very shortly next year. But he's kind of like a lot of kids. I knew what I wanted to do when I was very little, it didn't turn out to be what I actually do. But he has always been like, well, I want to be a space police when he was like four. Or like, I don't really know what I want to be. And but this year, he says, he wants to be a mechanical engineer. And I definitely think it's because of all this stuff that they're doing. So great job to the STEAM teachers as well as the rest of the staff that I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
How you guys doing? I'm Ryan Strauss. I'm a lifelong resident of Schwartz Creek, graduated ninety-seven. First of all, I want to say thank you all for doing a job that you're doing. It's a tough job, you know, you're running a multimillion-dollar budget and all this stuff. I want to talk to you guys a little bit, I'm going to piggyback on Mr. Horton a little bit with the athletic department. My son did play varsity soccer this year and we're supposed to get parent surveys at the end of the year, at the end of the season. Well, they did not go out, okay? My wife had to email Mr. Boski about the surveys. She finally got the survey, my wife got it two weeks ago. And then she had to remind Adrian to send the survey to me so I could actually fill out a survey. And I did not receive the survey until last Monday. And mind you, these were due on Friday, the fourteenth of November. I finally got it out. I wrote it out. I really think this board should actually review the surveys that are actually the parents are putting in. They're actually, these surveys are important for the renewing of contracts. Because I think that we have coaches in our school district, they're not performing properly. They're not bringing the athletic values up for the student-athlete. It's about the student-athlete's journey, like Mr. Horton's son. It's about what we can do for our kids. The memorable things, like they go to their twenty-year reunion and they're going, hey, you remember when we played basketball together? Remember when we played soccer together? And the excellent time we had, the positive and team environment that was brought around our coaching. Remember when our coach did this? My son can't say any of that about the season. They had five wins on the season, five. This is his third season. I don't want to say anything else, but this is his third season with five wins. All right, now it's time to reevaluate the program, all right? So as a school board, I think you guys need to be more involved with the renewal of the contracts, reviewing the parent surveys and saying, hey, is this guy actually doing the job to create not only a positive environment, but a winning program? Okay, that's like the biggest thing for me right now. I'm a travel coach, I still coach travel, I coach for DCFC here in Jesse County. I've been coached for twenty years. My dad started this program, Schwartz Creek Soccer Program, in nineteen seventy-six. And I hate to see the program in the way it is right now. This is the most talent that we've had in the Schwartz Creek Soccer Program since I played. And that was in nineteen ninety-seven. I've never seen this growth in kids. The majority of these kids I actually coach at DCFC. They're kids that I've actually raised up. And I'm telling you right now, this is the time for actually, we have a good shot to be in the top three in Metro. And we need someone to run that and bring that positive environment and actually push them forward to get that mentality, that winning mentality, all right? That's what I want to talk to you guys about, is that these surveys are important to the programs. We need to sit there and really, really look into them. And you guys as the board need to look into them more before you renew the contracts. How much time we got left?
Twenty-five seconds.
Okay, secondly, this is one thing I want to say. I've heard a lot of my kids going to school here about the instances, the violence and the violence that they've had recently with the fights and stuff like that. I really think the school board needs to look into maybe a model of what Davidson runs, to where they actually have, they got a grant to hire former police officers to come in and actually run, they're holding, well, how's that for this? My buddy Matt runs it. They're former police officers and they actually just wear polos and khakis and they have CPLs and the kids, they walk around to the school, the kids know them. And actually, it alleviates the stress of their SRO. And that's actually where the SRO can actually investigate, you know, touching drugs. All right, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Remember, these are agenda-specific. We got a little off-topic there, but agenda-specific, that's okay.
Hello, I'm Tom Miller. I live at seventy-one oh-four Lennon Road. I've lived in the school district for eighteen years. My uncle raised his family here for sixty-plus years, who's lived in this district too. So I am an employee of Carmen Ainsworth High School. So I have two things that I would like to just point out and that kind of impact where I live. My son graduated last year here from Schwartz Creek High School as a twenty-twenty-five grad. Went through all the elementaries. Like I said, I worked at Carmen Ainsworth, but I didn't have him come there. I had him be educated here because I think this is a great school district. But I do want to, and I realize there's a lot of voices out here in this community that are pointing out different things to you. But the two things I would like you to reconsider is, one is about the sale of Morris Elementary. Hopefully that you're able to go and reengage them and ask. I work as a driver's training instructor. I drive by those properties every day. You are seeing more and more homes being taken down by that. And it's taken care of by the state. That's going to be run. I also know in Flint Township, they have a spur that's going to the railroad. They have that property there right across from Maple that is going to be a part of that project. So those things are going in, whether it's done in five years, ten years, I do not want to have someone who wants to buy my home have to send their kids to Morris because that's where my kids, those kids would go. So I hope you would readjust, relook at that. My second thing is, I would like to talk about is the school of choice. As a person involved in education, I want to make sure a couple of things are not misunderstood. The per pupil value of each student is the same as someone who is in the school district. It is not different than the one who lives in the district, is different than the one who comes to that district. So I want to make sure that that is a true statement. And you can find that in the Bridge Magazine or at the state website for ten thousand five hundred. That's, every student gets that same one for this district. So I hope that you would consider that. And look at that, it's not something that a Schwartz Creek student is going to be, gets more money. Now, it's true, our tax base pays into this, but it's not the student, all right? The student who gets that. So that shouldn't be a reason, all right? And then the other thing as far as school of choice goes, do you know how many school districts are a closed district? That means that those students must be in that district. And those students who already live in that district have to attend that district. And no kids can leave and go to another district. A closed district is that. There's only one, and that is Novi down in Detroit. That is a different environment in terms of amount of people that live there. The household income as far as the value of the home, five hundred thousand dollar home versus two hundred thirty, two hundred fifty thousand dollar homes here.
Yeah, forty-five seconds.
So I want to make sure that you understand that that's a different thing. But my question is, why is only one school district a closed district? So I hope that we don't consider that or go to that or need to go to that. There's no reason. I also work at Carmen Ainsworth High School. Guess what? People are late every day and it doesn't matter whether they're school of choice or they live in the district. Majority of the kids that I deal with every day there are in district and they're late to school, all right? So that shouldn't be another reason. And I just want to make sure those things are addressed. I thank you for your time. I thank you for everything you do for Schwartz Creek Schools. And I really respect what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, we'll move on. Nobody else? Okay, through the consent agenda.
The motion was by Carrie and supported by Andrea. Any questions? Any comments? Go ahead. Thirteen and fourteen. Correct. So we can change that, Ken, if there's a motion to change it and support.
I'll make a motion to change it.
And I'll support it.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, supported by Andrea to switch items thirteen and fourteen. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Yes, we should do that. I agree. So back to the consent agenda with the payment of bills. Can you do roll call, please, Sue?
Andrea Fick, yes. Carrie Jermaine. Chuck Melkey.
Yes.
Jenny Walgast.
Yes.
Ken Engel.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Autumn Henry. Yes, seven yes.
And I should add that on our board subcommittee reports, I don't believe we'll have a treasures report this evening. Normally, I think we vote on that. And that's because we have a new board member that came on and doesn't have the templates yet or the right software to do it. And partially, that's my fault because I was going to give Jenny the template and I think Sue is going to send it to her. And we'll get that to you next month, so.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but we should have like a reasonable amount of time to create the minutes after the meeting because it was less than twenty-four hours.
Yes, we'll do that. We'll do that on each committee.
It wasn't the template, it was just the turnaround time.
I have it just off the cuff. I have the same problem. We changed that meeting, Jenny, because Alyssa Bouchard could not make it on Monday. So we switched it to Tuesdays because the financial committee, the operations committee and the new bond committee was always done on Mondays, which gave us forty-eight hours instead of twenty-four hours. And I have the same time. Sue will vault for me. I'm always sending it to her at two forty-five, three o'clock and apologizing for all my titles.
Well, I mean, I can.
But I'm good with that.
Yeah, no, I have all my notes. I will definitely speak during the subcommittee report for the bond committee. And then Ken can start and I can finish. But I don't think that we should be expected to have minutes turned around less than twenty-four hours after the meeting.
No, I agree a hundred percent. That was going to come up.
I will get those completed within like forty-eight hours, but twenty-four hours is.
We'll talk about changing that subcommittee. I think that would be the best thing.
Yeah, we can talk about that too.
Where's the payment of bills that we just approved? Well, I got that. I mean, like, that I review. I'd like to have a copy.
This right here. You have it. We reviewed it at the subcommittee last night.
All right.
And usually what happens is the treasurer will read that and he'll have approval for minutes along with that. So we're good. Okay, we'll go on to Jim. Intrum superintendent report, I'm sure he has a lot for us. Some of this is going to be probably double-covered.
Yeah, probably. Well, good evening, everyone. First off, I appreciate Mr. Austin Offsenick for what he's mentioned. Our elementary schools, our high schools, I love all the different programs that they put together. And I just want to say thank you to all those buildings and programs. We have math nights, science nights, STEM nights, cultural nights. And one in particular I want to highlight today was the DEEAC for the last ten years has put on a veterans breakfast. It has been such a moving experience. And Chris Treeger, Tarek Imbrou, Heather Briggs put this together. We have lots of veterans who show up to see their kids sing, the kids come through and do lots of patriotic songs. I put a couple on social media, Twitter, X. But just so proud of what they do. And those veterans leave feeling so honored and recognized for the sacrifice that they made for our country. It's a beautiful thing. And so I just want to openly say congratulations and thank you to DEEAC Elementary for continuing that tradition. Excited to say with Mary Crapo, we are just, we're right now in the midst of our final survey with that field. So there's a couple of things that still need to take place. We need to get our netting in and with the city, there's a couple of things that need to be fixed with their punch list. But we are so close to this being finalized. We have had our sign training, so right now it says, go Dragons. But in the next few days, you're going to start seeing information come across there and be more dynamic than what it is right now. We have just a handful of things that need to be fixed before we officially open it. I know it's a discussion item, but I'm officially recommending that maybe in the spring, like March tenth is a date that I think looks good. If we want to do a community-type opening, ribbon cutting, I would love for it to still be dark, so around five o'clock, we can have our community walk onto the field and see what it's like under those lights. It'd be a beautiful thing. And so that's my recommendation. I know there's going to be discussion about it. Our first baseball game there is March nineteenth. And so we'd be ahead of that still, but an opportunity for the community to come out and share that. It really is a beautiful thing. Our MTSS, we were recognized, I sent this to you guys, but I wanted to highlight it over the air. About twenty years ago, our district was pioneers with multi-tiered systems of support. And with our classrooms, we have tier one, tier two, tier three. And it's meant to help students where they are at different tiers. It's the same with behavior. So we received a recognition for MTSS data utilization and MTSS implementation and impact. And basically, all of these are about behaviors, the things that we do to address student behavior, from our positive behavior intervention supports to check-ins and check-outs to strategies that we have to support students with behavior. Every one of our schools is on the list for bronze for implementation and data utilization. So after being a pioneer in the district with this, it feels good to be recognized and credited for the work that's being done with that. Quickly here, I have, the Winter Institute is coming up. Winter Institute for School Boards, so I want to make sure to give you this information. Two, three, this way. Yep, if you could please let us know if you'd like to attend that. Also, this is, this is an important piece. This is for the superintendent search. It's from Ray and Associates. Two things need to take place. This is a confidentiality statement. So as, here in the very short term, you're going to be getting names of candidates who have applied for the position. So this confidentiality agreement is basically you saying that you promise not to say those names in public and that we keep it private until the appropriate time. If you could actually read this, sign it and pass it down to Sue, that would be great. And then one other piece, and I don't know that you want to necessarily discuss it now, but it is pretty urgent, is as we have some candidates from out of state who are interested, the requests come from Ray and Associates for you to make a decision whether or not you want to pay for those travel expenses for people that we interview from out of state. I don't know if you want to, you know, being that December twelfth is the closing, you may want to either discuss now and make a decision or we can have a special board meeting to come together and make that decision. But we need to get this information to Ray and Associates.
What's the deadline, Jim?
Well, basically, it's.
That they want their answer.
Yeah, so that would be.
Sue, did they give you a deadline? I know we're being.
That's when, yeah, that's when posting closes.
I don't see a deadline. It just says, it was left to the board. We'd discuss and let us know the decision. Please follow up and let us know.
We do have a December tenth board meeting where we could do it then, but it's two days before the closing. It's pretty close.
That's just to affirm or deny if we're going to pay for.
Travel expenses.
Travel.
Yes.
And.
Reimburse.
Yeah, reimburse them for their travel. I talked to Sue earlier in the week and we left Carrie. It was gracious enough to stay like chair of that committee, I'll call, for lack of better terms. So.
They will only release the names to board members who've signed the confidentiality agreement. As Jim mentioned, we have five people who have completed applications. Four are from out of state. And we have five additional applications that are in process, but they haven't released any kind of location details. But we do currently have at least four people who could be coming to us if they were chosen from out of state.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. And I guess we can either wait or we can wait to the end of the meeting here, close to it, have that discussion because I'm sure there's going to be varied opinions on whether we should pay or not pay for people to travel here. I know you're smiling down there, Ken, but we will, I'm sure we'll have some active discussion on that. So I think we can talk about that later.
So Chuck, if I may.
Yes.
I did confirm with Jamie yesterday at the finance meeting when she was going through the budget that we do have money that has been allocated for the cost of this recruitment that could be used for expenses as an example.
All right, not to get off the beaten path and steal Jim's thunder, how much was the allocated money? You know?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty. What else can that be used for though?
So she just has it. She has like little line item adjustments. So she has like a placeholder for thirty thousand. It's not really like hard allocated. She just created space in the budget so that if we decided to go that direction, it wouldn't require an adjustment to her budget that she already had approved.
That's fine. It's off topic. I just wanted to know if that from my personal. And the press report, thirty thousand dollars is what they have set aside. Okay, thank you. Keep going, Jim. I'm apologize.
Well, and because of the length of the agenda, that's the extent of my report tonight.
Does anybody have any questions? Of Jim? And we'll take turns so we don't, everybody gets a turn on the board. Who would like to go first if they have any questions? For Jim?
Yes.
No. Jenny, Kim? Okay, Carrie? Any questions to Jim?
I'm good.
Okay, we'll move on. I want to pronounce your name wrong. Desi? Yes, I'm careful about that one. It could be different. So please give us your student board report. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I hope you guys are having a great evening. So I wanted to start off by saying that the boys volleyball powder puff test officially started. I think it was like this week. And their game will be November twenty-fifth at six PM. And that's the last day before Thanksgiving break. Also, the winter sports season is starting. They finished tryouts last week, I believe. And they're starting practices before Thanksgiving break. And I wish them luck and hope their season starts off amazing. Also, softball workouts are starting soon as well. They start in December. And it's a great way for girls to get ready for the spring season. Sixteen percent of parents showed up at the parent-teacher conferences for the high school. Also, the high school play, which is called the trap, it's also referred to as don't tell the secret, will be this weekend, the twenty-first, twenty-second and twenty-third. The middle school staff has started universal quarterly assessments for all content areas. And they look at data to try and determine what areas the students need more help on and to better their learning environment. And I just think this is a great way for students to know that they're getting the necessary help and for the teachers as well. Also, the middle school has a fun night coming up and they will be playing games, eating pizza, going swimming and more. And all of those students are very excited and looking forward to it. Siring is hosting a principal for the day contest to raise funds for future assemblies. The students purchase tickets to put in a drawing for the opportunity to take over the principal's duties for the day while still supporting educational events for the school. The DEEAC and Siring PTO hosted a basketball jones assembly on Monday and it focused on the growth mindset and the power of yet. And the staff and students enjoyed it. And Siring is collaborating with Starbucks on Corona Road to spread Christmas cheer. The students will be coloring coffee sleeves, which adds creativity throughout the community and puts a smile on everyone's faces. And the student council members are doing a stuff the bus on November twenty-second. People can drop off money or canned goods at the cage and this helps feed the community for Thanksgiving. And lastly, DEEAC also had a giving tree where they support seven families. And this year, a total of twenty students and family members were supported for the season.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have one and it was actually about to, probably not the time.
Enough to Desi.
Oh, no.
Yeah, let's stay on track. Does anybody have any questions, Desi? Everybody happy? Everybody good? Thank you, Desi, for a great report. Short and sweet, to the point. Thank you. Okay, we'll go, I'm sorry. Oh, I don't know. Do you want to stay for the meeting or do you like to leave? It's up to you. You sure? Okay. That's fine. Well, we got a bet that we'll be done by nine o'clock, so. We're hoping that. We've got a couple of us that have a bet.
That ain't coming close, Chuck.
Well, I'm trying to win my bet.
You're about to lose.
Employment of non-certified staff. Does anybody have any questions on that? Um, appointment of non-certified staff. Um, does anybody have any questions on that? I didn't, I didn't look through that yet, but there's nothing that has to be voted on. Anybody have any questions about it?
Wait, does that say co-op? Yeah. Did we do a co-op class still?
I don't know. You'd have to ask Jim.
Yeah.
I think Michelle's here. I don't know. But Jim, can you answer that?
Well, who, did you say, do we do a co-op class?
Yeah.
We have that through our business department. Um, Michelle.
Yes.
She wants to speak.
Michelle, pause. Or Jamie, Ken, can you just stand up to this podium, please?
I can't see beyond 10 feet.
We have a question from the board.
It's actually called, um, workplace learning now. Um, there was a difference. Uh, there was a change before I came on board on why we had to change that. I'm not really sure, but now it's called workplace learning and it's through our business department.
There's, I know we used to employ co-ops throughout the district. Is that, is that a thing again?
We actually have one, um, student working for our IT department. Um, and it's through the workplace learning program. That's the only one I know that's in district.
We used to have an extensive program, so she's referencing the elementarys had co-ops, uh, but we, it didn't meet the, the time allocation and so we had to abandon it.
Well, that's one of those classes. No, that's all right. Thank you, Jamie. When I worked at the police department, I had three co-op students. Actually, I hired one every year and it worked out really well, but that was in eight, nine and 10. Okay. That was a question on that. Uh, board subcommittee reports. Uh, Carrie, we'll start out with academic achievement.
Sure. Thank you. All right. We met on the 11th. And, um, in attendance was myself, Andrea, Kim Winter, Jenny Wogast, Jim Kitchen, Michelle Paul and Dave Simonson. Uh, we, um, provide, we received information about iXL for the high school. Michelle Paul updated the committee on the high school's request to implement, implement the iXL program, which is new to the district for ELA and math. Um, I also, since I typed this, added social studies and science because Michelle was able to get quotes that are in our packet for approval tonight for all four of those subjects, which is wonderful. Teachers will be able to use the NWEA program results to customize and personalize student study plans using iXL. And, um, iXL will actually be very valuable for students who are preparing for the ACT or SATs. Access to the iXL to, uh, to high school would complete the ELA access for all district students. Um, so that's important to remember. So now you have continuity between the buildings when they're in elementary to middle school to high school. And iXL offers biology, chemistry, physics, history, civics and social studies. So we're getting really close to the complete, um, offering that they provide. Eighth grade students currently have access to iXL, so this would be great in their transition to ninth grade. And the addition of iXL to the high school would be covered by 31A at-risk grant funds, which you'll see in the proposal that Michelle's bringing to us tonight. Implementation includes training for the teachers. Everybody always wants to know how the teachers going, are going to learn to implement this. And there'll be parent communications on iXL. The committee discussed whether student incentives would be valuable. I think Kim had asked that question about whether it would be possible to incentivize the students. And, um, Michelle also shared an interesting trivia point, if you want to play trivia games, that at least 30 questions per week are, um, ideal to see a measurable impact on a student's success who's, when they're using these questions to complement their education. We also got information on the literacy leader network partnership with grant-funded support of 35A7. Michelle gave us an update on that early literacy project highlighting leadership support to empower building leaders as instructional leaders. The partnership is funded by the 35A7 grant funding and includes the, um, payment of a literacy coach through that grant. And, um, they will help the buildings build literacy schedules for educators. So people are planning to be out of the building. They can look at that schedule to make sure they're not missing out on opportunities. As a reminder, we are one of three districts that were chosen within Genesee County to partner with the literacy leader network. And just for everybody's information, 35A7, um, we have a lot of grants. This is the Literacy Essentials Professional Learning Grant. Um, then we had no public comments. We did thank Michelle for her presentations and for sharing her expertise and innovation with the, the district. And I want to personally thank her because she's always coming to us with amazing information. And the next meeting is scheduled for December 2nd. That's it. Any questions?
Hi. Does anybody have any questions? Um, I just have one, Carrie. On the 35A7 grants, when we hire somebody for that grant and the grant, if it does run out, are we obligated to keep that employee on the school district? And if you can't answer it, I'll, I'll, uh, Michelle, you can approach the podium and tell me the answer, yes or no. I mean, it's a pretty straight answer. Alan's smiling. He might know. He knows a lot about our audience.
Actually, this coach isn't hired by us. They're paid directly from the grant. And so they'll come in and work with our leaders, um, but we won't have to hire them. And so they're not our employee directly.
That was my only question. Thank you, Michelle. Does that, anybody else have any questions? That's great. Carrie, I know that we jumped on your thunder, but go ahead and, and do your little report on the, uh, because I know it's very short, on your superintendent search. Cause I think you have a report in there somewhere about that. Yeah, on the board workshop. Do you want to read that?
Hmm.
I think you have it.
Approved in our-
It's, it's in our packet. It's just underneath your, um, I think it says Swartz Creek.
It was approved in the minutes.
Oh, okay. All right. And we don't need to read it? Okay, fine. Thank you. All right. Then we'll go to Andrea, uh, policy and procedure.
Policy. Policy was November 11th at 3:00 PM here at the administration office. And in attendance were myself, Carrie Jermaine, Jennifer Wogast, Kim Winter, Ken Engel, Jim Kitchen, Dave Simonson and Michelle Paul. Meeting was called to order at 3:07. Uh, we, our main discussion was 31A, A, the grant considerations. And I know Jim has sent out a couple of emails about these, so we talked a lot about it. There's PDFs available as well. But basically this grant is available to us for safety and security things. And we've got some positions that come out of this grant. But the, the big hashtag on it is if we take this grant money, we also, then we waive privileges to, we waive all attorney-client privilege if there is a mass casualty event of three or more individuals. Um, and there's no explanation to that waiver. So, and we talked a lot about it at the meeting. So you weren't there. I'll be writing Jim's notes, but it is funding we already get. It is something that we can continue to get, but if we choose to continue to get this grant, we will waive those privileges. Anybody that wasn't there, and Ken, Jenny was all there, so.
Actually, um, Trune came in and, and gave a great presentation, uh, yesterday.
Oh, at yours? Okay.
At our, they also came to our committee meeting and gave a, a great explanation on how it works. And we had a lot of discussion on it, a lot.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Well, then we'll let that go. So we didn't have any public comment. Um, the only committee comment, Jenny just asked, we had new policies to read tonight, which we just have the final read. Are we doing the final read tonight?
Yes.
Second read?
Yes, I believe so.
Um, second read on the policies and doing the adoption. Next meeting is Tuesday, December 2nd, 3:00 PM. Here, we adjourned at 4:12.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? And we're going to talk about the 31AA pretty, pretty soon here. I do have some questions, but I want to save it because I always had questions on the, uh, the money for, uh, private security. I believe somebody from the audience, Ryan, said that. We had discussion on it yesterday. And I was just wondering if we could maybe hire some security personnel for the elementaries with it, but they said we couldn't currently.
Hire SROs.
Yeah.
But not private.
Yeah. We've already got three. I'd like to put some full-time in the, uh, elementary schools, but it wouldn't be cost. It would be cost prohibitive. So, okay, thank you. All right. Next committee, I guess is mine, right? Well, I, I'm going to do building and site and then Jenny, you can do treasury. Is that okay? In behind you. Okay. Why don't you go ahead and go with it? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I will get you guys, so as I said, so, and maybe we, I don't know if this is appropriate time to discuss or not, but, um, I believe we should kind of change if we have a policy or just add something to say, we had a certain amount, a certain amount of time after a meeting happens to create minutes.
We can talk about that?
Okay. Yeah, like I don't know.
Do you want to do them on Mondays?
That works. Like the following Monday?
Me and you are the main ones. That's why we've been for seven years.
Reschedule it. Even if we don't reschedule, just some kind of a, an allowance of time to create minutes after a meeting completes. Even if we had, like, cause we even had like the special committees, like the construction and then those. And we were having the meetings the night before and then we had to come back the next day and have meeting minutes. So I would say, can we say we get like two days after?
That's why we should, yeah, we can do it on Mondays at two o'clock. If you want. That's what we had before. If it's, it's, if it's agreeable to board.
So I'm asking something different. So I'm not asking you to reschedule the meetings at this time because I know that we're going to be redoing all of our schedules.
But we have to have the reports ready for our board meeting.
Well, yeah. So I will, I will, I will give you the report, but I won't have meeting minutes.
Okay.
For, but that's what I'm saying. Is that, is that an acceptable? Can we agree on that, that you get like 48 hours to create?
We have to ask the secretary that, if it's okay to read it in without notes.
Do we, well, do we, first of all, do we want to move the, the night, the meeting on the 9th to the 8th? Just, we only have one left. Okay. Just so you have two days before the next December meeting.
I can do that.
Double check. I gotta double check. Are you asking me or Sue?
No, I, 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 I can do it. I, the only reason I changed from Mondays to Tuesdays is for, uh, Alyssa Bouchard.
Her reading the notes.
Oh, her reading the notes. If she needs 48 hours, it'll work out then.
Well, I, so I can read the notes now. I just don't have typed out meeting minutes because I, I have my, my paper copy. I don't think you guys wanted me to scan this and submit this. So I could read, I can give the report. I just, I'm letting you know that you're not going to have a nice, pretty, um, minutes report until like tomorrow. I can get that too tomorrow.
So to be fair, should we make a motion that meeting notes will be done within 48 hours so that you can have them turned by tomorrow, since we didn't have them tonight?
That's fair.
That's what I was asking. So.
If somebody want to make, because we have to vote on financials normally. So, as a matter of-
I will read that.
Right, right, right.
The actual minutes will be available until tomorrow.
Within 40 hours.
Within 40. Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Support? Support? All supporters? I don't think we need a roll call. We just go eyes and ayes on it. Although it has to do with money.
To, uh, say that your minutes have to be available 48 hours after the-
Yeah, the motion was to be, yes.
And you still want to move the next?
Well, we haven't talked about that yet. So what, so we should-
Just say with one motion, one motion, you, you made a motion that she has 48 hours to do her written notes on this one time. Yep. And it was seconded by Autumn. This is a one-time deal on this one, Sue. All right. We'll, we'll, we'll go, we'll go through a roll call just because it does have to do with money and we're going to have to accept it. So go ahead and call, roll call.
All right. Jenny Wogast.
Yes.
Ken Engel.
Yes.
Chuck Melkey.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Motion passes. I don't know if it's legal, but we just made it. I don't think it's a big deal.
I think it's a fair.
Yeah, yeah. All right. And then we'll talk about that later in the meeting about changing the date. So that will give you the 48 hours.
Okay. All right. Um, so bond committee, um, we started at 2:06 PM. We met at the, um, conference room in here. Um, present, we had, let me see if I can read my, um, so we had, um, why am I not looking? Okay. So we had from Off, we had, um, Esthals French, Esth Carlson. We had Bill Loader, we had Jim Kitchen, we had David, Dave Simonson, Carrie Jermaine, um, Chuck Melkey. Um, can't read my own. Who else was here?
You know, I, I haven't typed in my notes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm gonna have to, yeah.
Dave Simonson, Carrie Jermaine, Bill Loader, Jim Kitchen, Jamie Cohen, Jenny Wogast yourself as the chair. Ken Engel, uh, Ken showed up late. I'm sorry. Uh, Michelle Paul.
Michelle, Jamie Cohen. Okay. That's, I was trying to figure, I'm like, wrote initials and I'm like, all right. So I would have figured it out eventually. So, and then Jamie, of course, was there as well. Okay. Um, so we started out with the bond update from Off. Um, they shared, um, the, uh, just kind of the, the progress. They're getting bids for the middle school and the high school, um, work that's going to be completed next summer. Um, they also, um, so they are going to have to move some of the, um, equipment and furniture, um, when they're doing some of the projects. So they had to, they didn't have to do a bid, um, but they were going to have to, um, hire a moving company to move and store some of that stuff so it doesn't get damaged during the, um, the bond work. Um, there was no public comment. Um, I don't believe we really had any, um, committee comment. If I had anything. Nope. Yep. So we, uh, and we completed the meeting at, uh, 2:50 PM. So, um, I kind of, do you want to start with the, yeah.
The portion of this meeting that I was there because we were running very late. This was the finance committee. We started at 3:43 PM. Oh, wow. You guys were there late. They ended at 5:13. Um, the, the big, the big topic was the 31AA. Um, Trune put on a presentation. I don't know which one of you down there, who just said it tonight and how that was going to work. Basically, for us to keep getting the money that we're going to, that we receive, we have to give up our rights through our attorney, the privilege part. So if someone wants to foil you that, they'll be able to foil it. And to cut to the chase on this, the reason this is probably a, an issue is because of Oxford. When people wanted answers from the school district, they could not get them. And those people are probably sitting over in Lansing, our lawmakers. Because that's who would conduct an investigation that they wanted that, that information. And I'm only speaking for me as a board member. I don't have a big problem with it. Um, if anyone ever has a tragedy like they had in Oxford, you know your school district is going to get picked apart. You're going to do things that probably in hindsight didn't work, could have been done better. You probably should have added, it's easy to armchair quarterback, something like that, after you know the answer to the question. Um, my big thing with that, and it's even what I said to the attorney while we were sitting there, because they don't necessarily think it's a great idea. My attitude with it is this, if you had one of those dead kids, you'd want to know what went on. That's the bottom line. If that was one of your children, you would want answers. And I, 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 not we, I think we owe that to our parents and our community. Uh, if a tragedy like that would ever happen, you know, we can only hope it won't. But, you know, you, you're going to get picked apart. I, I read a, uh, a deal that was done for Oxford. I'm sure that school district thought they had everything in place. They found out they didn't. You, 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 I don't think you could ever prepare for that. Is, as police officers, we train and we think we have the answers. As school board members and administrators, you think you have the answers. You don't, because you don't know what the game plan is coming in the door. If you knew the game plan, then you would be fine, but you don't. Um, I was SRO over at Linden for eight years. I looked at many, 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 many different school shootings. There's none of them that are identical. They all have a different twist to them. Uh, you know, down in Udelde, Texas, they have their own police department at that school district. Didn't work well. Uh, you know, and we can go on and on and on. College. I'm drawing a blank. No, not Michigan State. Over on the east side. Huh? Yes, Virginia Tech. Virginia Tech, there'd already been a shooting on the campus earlier that day. Their SWAT team had been called out and was there practicing when it took place. Still didn't work out that great. So, you know, you can have the best plan. You can have the most lucky setup to have your SWAT team on the campus. It, it's not necessarily going to work out the way we want it to. So I think from a disclosure standpoint, I don't think the state's going to come in and meddling our business for every bad bus crash or, you know, fighting a school that, that ends up with multiple casualties. And casualties are anyone with an injury, not a death. Um, I don't think they're going to come and investigate that. They want to know what happened in a situation like Oxford. So some of that's my opinion. I think giving up what we would have to give up, that we have a part in that, it's, it's perfectly fine. The other part of it was the audit, which I'm not going to say two words about, because this gentleman is going to put it up on that screen here in maybe five minutes or fifteen minutes. But we'll let him do it and you guys can all watch it, because that's what we did. And then Jenny finished.
Yep, um, so, um, Michelle Paul brought, um, a job description for a grants coordinator. Um, and since nobody there objected, we told her to go ahead. Just kidding. Um, we'll talk about that later. Other than that, it was pretty, that was pretty much all of it.
I would move that we accept Jenny's finance report.
So, or, yes.
Seconded by Autumn. I have a motion on the floor by Carrie Jermaine, seconded by Autumn Henry, except the treasurer's report is written by, I'm sorry, not written, as spoken by Ken and Jenny. Roll call votes, Sue.
Chuck Melkey.
Yes.
Ken Engel.
Yes.
Jenny Walgas.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes. Uh, next subcommittee report was, um, mine, I guess, operations building grounds. It started at two fifty-one P M. We took it out of order. Um, usually we do finance, but we waited a little late. We were running a little late and, uh, some people had to leave. It was, it was conducted on eleven eighteen twenty twenty-five in the administration building in the boardroom. Mean was called by myself, president was Dave Simonson, Carrie Jermaine, Bill Loader, Jim Kitchen, Jamie Cohen, Jenny Walgas, Ken Engel, Michelle Paul, Alan Gamble, Al Jory from the public, and, uh, the O C and French people were still online waiting because there were some questions afterwards about treasury. First, uh, thing was Mary Crepel. It's open. People were playing on the ball field. I watched them Saturday, I'm sorry, Friday, Saturday, and, and I believe Thursday afternoon using a ball field, so. Um, there was a request for a plaque. Um, that was sent back to the administration by myself for different options. Uh, and we will have brief board discussion on it when, uh, Michelle Paul and Jim Kitchen and Dave Simonson, I believe that was their group, uh, come up with some suggestions. Uh, somebody wants to put a plaque on the dugout, um, and, uh, memory, and I think we have a picture of that somewhere. Uh, and we're not opposed to that, but we want some type of criteria. So we just don't have somebody saying my favorite baseball coach was A, B, C, D, or E. And we'll have fifty-two plaques on, on the building. So we're going to have some type of criteria so we have something that we can judge it by. If not, we'll probably have an audience pack. So that was a big thing there. We're also making a plaque for the current board members, uh, to have a, some type of, uh, small pillar put up, and I suggested that we do a time capsule and that we take suggestions from all the elementary kids, each building, the five elementaries, the middle school and high school, have them collectively, uh, collect items that they would like in that time capsule. And then, um, I want them put in that little pillar with the plaque on it, and that way, a hundred years from now, when the ball field's no good, somebody else can open it up and see what we were arguing and talking about and waste their time on it, doing good, doing bad, whatever it may be. So. Everybody agreed at the committee that that would be a good idea, and I appreciate that. I just think, and we're, oh, I think Jim came up with the idea, potentially two of actually taking part of the stones from the Mary Crepel cornerstone and placing that inside the pillar also, so they could see that when they opened it up in a hundred years. So, um, that was about that. I'm Mary Crepel. There's going to be a soft opening in March. There's going to be brief board discussion later. I would like to do a, uh, an opening in, in November, but that's my opinion. We'll talk about it later. I'm, apologize, December. Hot chocolate, donuts, and cider for everybody. And Ken, you'll like the donuts. Uh, general operation out updates. There was two brand new snow work trucks purchased. They've been delivered to the district. We voted on that last week. They're currently being undercoated. I believe Jenny suggested that last month. Um, it's pretty cheap to do it, about a hundred and fifty bucks. We have to do it every year, but he gives a lifetime guarantee on the frame and door panels and stuff like that from Crown. Um, the plows are also installed on it. Uh, Bill's going to come to us with a Bud bus replacement, uh, program. He wants to get three new buses for next fiscal year. Um, the other three buses haven't delivered. They're Thomas Brands. They came in a few weeks ago. There'll be an operational by Thanksgiving Day, which we have that, that weekend off. All the safety equipment will be installed along with cameras. Uh, the three new buses that Bill wants are a hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, uh, per unit. Uh, the cage field house is wrapped up. Everything's done there, and it's been all winterized. All the dry cooler's been winterized and all the, uh, middle school, high school, and other buildings that needed, one year was not done and cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars. We were in a lawsuit with somebody over that. They were supposed to show us, but they didn't do it the right way. Uh, all the athletic fields have been winterized. The concession stand has been winterized, but I don't think the equipment's in it yet. Am I correct? Okay. And, uh, so that was it on general operations update. The L D L C property update. Um, the owner has agreed to sell us that small area at the very south of our parking lot for five thousand dollars. The committee suggested that we buy it. Have it drawn up by Thrun, and I believe it's here for, uh, board action later. We're just waiting on a final survey, I think, but it's all pretty much done, and that portion of the driveway will be paved next year. Uh, for people that weren't here for the last few months of discussion, whoever, when we purchased it, and I wasn't during my tenure, they didn't do a proper survey and part of our property was on the neighbor's property. So there's some discussion about paving parking lots and uh, curbs and stuff like that. So that's just going to be cleaned up. He offered us to, uh, rent it for three thousand dollars a year, so we decided to make the purchase. Um, as to be good neighbors, sidewalks were repaired at L D C also. Most of the patching was done on L D C with infrared done. Um, that was pretty it. And, um, public comment, Al Jory came, he, uh, we're going to have a discussion item on that in a little bit. I suggest that we bring it to a full board meeting. He would like access to our, um, uh, hmm, I'm having a, a, a brain, brain. Uh, yeah, the cage. No, no, I'm trying to think of the, the right term. No. Retention pond, thank you. Yeah, the retention pond. So he wants to use our retention pond and have easement with some pipes going over, and he's agreeing to take care of it. And me and Jim will talk about that underneath new discussion items. And other than that, we closed it at, uh, three forty P M. And the next meeting will be on December ninth, unless we agree to change it to the eighth at two P M. So I have any questions of the building and operations? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to board discussion items. S C C audit presentation. Alan, you have the floor. Please come up, introduce yourself to the board. We have some new board members here.
Yep, uh, so good evening, everyone. I'm Alan Gamble with Lewis and I C P A. He's an incoming partner at the firm. And, uh, so I've been doing this audit for the last couple of years now, working with Jamie, and, uh, you guys do a great job as always, and, uh, Jim and everyone are always very nice and welcoming to us on, on site, so I always appreciate that. It's always a very easy audit to get through. Um, so as you can see on the first slide here of your, for your audit approach, uh, or sorry, second slide here, move it on, um, the, uh, and, uh, so you'll see that you did receive a clean, unmodified audit opinion. So this will kind of just show you our audit approach that we're going through here. Uh, so we did fieldwork in, uh, June of this year. We started fieldwork, but prior to year end, kind of get some preliminary testing done, and then we came back out on September second and third to get our fieldwork wrapped up. And, uh, Jamie's always so ready for us. It's pretty impressive to get this audit done in two days. She'd be, her to be that ready when you guys are this large of a district. Sometimes it takes three or four days in the past, and, but she's well-oiled machine, does everything in order for us. It's always very easy to get through. Uh, so your audit opinion is supported by review and testing while on material balance sheet accounts. We'll make sure that everything's reconciled and that is in the proper place. And once we reconcile the balance sheet, it kind of ensures us that everything is in the proper spots, and then it's just a matter of is everything classified correctly with your grants and your revenue and expenditure side. So we do various procedures to make sure that everything looks good there, and we had no issues report your state aid, property taxes, all that stuff looks good. Going to your next slide here again with audit approach, uh, we do, uh, perform some internal control testing. Um, so we'll perform walkthroughs of all your internal control cycles, how you have cash coming in with your cash receipts, cash disbursements, your cash coming out, payroll, making sure your employers are being paid at the rates that was approved by the board and their, our, these are step schedules. And, uh, so we'll test journal entries, make sure that no fraudulent entries or stuff like that are going on, that, or money that's being disappeared. And so we had no issues like that to report. I know a control issue, so we just recommend that the board and everyone here just keeps doing what you guys are doing because you're doing a great job. And as I said, you did receive a clean, unmodified audit opinion, so that is the highest level of assurance you can receive on the financial statements. And to note in your opinion paragraph, you will see that you adopted G A S B one oh one for the current year, which is a compensated absence standard, and, uh, this is just a government-wide standard that significantly increased your liability on the government-wide level, but doesn't have any effect on your general fund reporting, and it's just a long-term estimate. The second opinion was given on a single audit. Uh, this will be done every time you have over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal expenditures. And next year will actually be increasing to a million dollars, but you guys will still be over that threshold. And, uh, so we tested the nutrition cluster or your food service funds for this year, which represents fifty-two percent of your four point six million dollars in federal awards. And, uh, again, an opinion on compliance is given, and, and we had no findings or compliance issues to report. The next slide here, uh, shows you a change in fund balance for the year by all your funds. Obviously, a general fund is your major, main fund here. Our revenue was, uh, forty-nine point three million, expenditures of forty-seven point five, so you had a net increase of one point eight million and an ending fund balance of thirteen point four. To give you an idea, that represents twenty-eight point two percent of your expenditures for the year with your fund balance. Uh, I've seen the capital projects fund. This is the new, uh, series one issuance you guys had in the current year of thirty-three million plus the other property taxes and interest there. So you ended up with thirty-five point six million in accounting revenue after it was all done, and expenditures of one point two. Uh, so you had a net change of, uh, increase that fund balance. You're now at thirty-four point five million in that fund. Uh, another keynote fund, uh, your sinking capital projects funds at two point four million, uh, your public improvement funds at two million dollars. Then you still have two point seven million dollars in your debt funds, and these funds are used to cover down on your, uh, capital projects payments, and obviously you'll have more revenue coming into these funds through the new property taxes and millages approved. Uh, food service, student activities will fluctuate year to year, but both of those fund balances are looking very healthy as well. Looking at your general fund revenues for the year, this just breaks down your, uh, your forty-nine million in, uh, general fund revenue by source. Uh, fifteen percent of your revenues came from local sources, which would be your property taxes, athletics, interest, other miscellaneous items. Uh, seventy-eight percent will be from your state aid sources, and, uh, five percent will be federal, and this is kind of decreasing from your prior years as your COVID Nesser funding is trickling away and no longer there. So your federal pot will be a lot lower going forward compared to your state portion. And then the other represents two percent, and that'll be intra-district source revenue, so that'll be funds that you receive from the G I S D for the other miscellaneous grants. Looking at your expenditure side, uh, this just breaks down your, uh, expenditures between instruction and support. Uh, fifty-three percent was spent on instruction, forty-two percent support, and five percent on community services and the other. And for anyone in the public curious, you can always look up bolt in ten eleven on the state website. It's a publicly available information where you can kind of compare the other districts of your size and see how those allocations are spread out, but you guys are pretty comparable to the other districts out there. Uh, looking at your general fund expenditures by object code on this page here, uh, this will kind of show you where, where your expenditures are being paid out of your general fund, and, uh, um, as with most districts, payroll is where the majority of your expenditures are. Uh, salaries make up forty-four percent, benefits thirty-two percent, first seventy-six percent in, uh, total salaries and benefits. And then purchase services make up another thirteen percent, which will have your edu staff and third-party staffing costs included in there as well as transportation expenses, the other miscellaneous items. And then we also have just a couple percent on your miscellaneous supplies, capital outlay, and the other items.
Uh, yesterday, and I apologize. I hope I don't put you on the spot.
Oh, you're good.
Um, operations, where's that at? In the thirteen percent? Or is that, I know the seventy-six percent and five percent is all to our employees of one.
I guess what you mean by operations.
Yeah, they, we put in four million dollars for operations. So where would that be on your chart here?
Uh, that would be in the other category, the, the other capital outlay, whole bit within those two, the five and the one percent.
Okay, so that's the, the five percent in the pan there. Okay, thank you. Sorry to stop your.
Oh, no, you're good. And then so on the budget here, you guys did a great job with the final budget. Obviously, you always want to be conservative on the expenditure side. So it didn't cause any issues with the state. Uh, so on the revenue side, you had a final budget of fifty point five, six million, actually came in just short of that at forty-nine point three eight million for a variance of one point one eight million under budget. But this is not money that you're necessarily just didn't, you budgeted for, and you're like, where did this money go? We didn't receive. It's, it's more like a deferred revenue that you receive the money through your state aid or the other sources, but you don't have the grant expenses to recognize that revenue yet. So it's just kind of a, an accounting principle where that money's getting shifted to your twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. And it's kind of reflective of on your expenditure side, where you have a final budget of fifty-two million, but you only had forty-seven million in expenditures where your revenue and expenditures kind of drive together in school districts. So that is a variance, a favorable variance of four point six million dollars under budget. And again, that is very good when you guys have so much money, you know, forty-seven million in expenditures in the fund, only be four million dollars. Variance is very good, and obviously you want to be on the conservative side, so you don't cause any variances with the state. And so while you budgeted for a conservative loss of one point six three million, you actually had an increase in the year of one point eight seven. Uh, looking at your long-term debt outstanding for the year, uh, you had, uh, seventy-six million dollars in long-term obligations outstanding as of June thirty of twenty twenty-five. Uh, this includes the new thirty-three million dollar bond issuance from series one, as it included those numbers. And as I mentioned earlier with the G A S B one oh one, that one point one million dollars, that large number out there was like a hundred thousand in the prior year under the old standard. Now it's up to one point one million. A substantial jump, but this, again, affects you every district and the state, and they are very large numbers now for every district. I'm looking at your MIPSers pension and O P E V liability. Uh, so this is just reporting that your proportionate share of the liability that every single district in the state of Michigan has. Uh, the, the state li- liability is over a billion dollars, and you guys are at less than one percent. You're at point two percent, or one percent of the liability. And even that amount equates to forty-nine million dollars in an unfunded pension liability. Uh, this did decrease from sixty-seven million in the prior year, so an eighteen million dollar decrease. So this is slowly becoming an asset. Hopefully, the next five, ten years with state budgeting, this will become an asset, but these numbers will continue to shift based on actual assumptions. If your teachers leave the district, the, the liability is going to follow them to the new district, stuff like that. So there's very, bunch of variables in here, so it's not necessarily that you're going to owe forty-nine million. If someone in the state at some point will owe that, it might not be you. So it's, it's a very long-term estimate that's over, you know, forty, fifty years. And on the O P E V side of things, as you can see, that is now an asset, meaning the state is overfunded or fully funded on the other employment benefits, and, uh, that's now at eight point four five million, up from one point one seven million dollars the prior year. So it's good to see an asset there, and hopefully eventually the pension liability become an asset as well. So this does resolve the net position deficit of five million for you guys, but it has no effect on your general fund or your fund level reporting or budgeting. And with that, I just want to say thanks again to the board, uh, Jamie, everyone here. You guys are always very welcoming to us. It's a very seamless audit, and, uh, Jamie's always just gives us access to the accounting systems, says, here's our records, here's your audit access, and we're able to get in, and she doesn't hide anything from us, and everything always goes very smooth and easy to work with, so I want to say thanks again, and open it up for any questions the board may have.
Any questions available?
Alan? I just have a comment. Thank you, Alan. Thanks for answering my questions yesterday. We got most of them out of the way yesterday.
Yep.
And you kept it well under fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I tried, but.
Thank you.
Yep, awesome. Yep, thank you, guys.
And Chuck, can I take a second just to thank Jamie and her team?
Yes.
To make it easier for them to have access, and I always appreciate that.
Yeah, the whole team was awesome.
Congratulations on your upcoming promotion.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, next one, elementary school discussion. Oh, and we had, everybody's happy with the audit, so. Elementary school discussion. Go ahead, Ken.
We put this on here, um, Jim had provided us some data, or not so much data, it was a questionnaire that went out to parents and staff in reference to returning to K five buildings. To keep it, to keep that simple, it was about two-thirds of the, two-thirds or a little over, would like to go back to that. Other things that, when that was a topic, I was actually leaving the board, and I watched it, uh, through the media, is that it was going to improve, uh, our test scores or education, uh, so we don't beat that proverbial dead horse. It is not, um, on the third to eighth grade. And I don't think anyone will argue that. The other is it was supposed to save money. Uh, it has not saved the district any money that anyone is showing us. So we thought it'd be something to bring back after, after receiving that information that Jim provided us. And the other things that were there, bring it back to the board for some discussion on what their feelings were on, uh, returning to K five buildings for the fall of twenty twenty. returning to K5 buildings for the fall of 2026. So if any of you have an opinion, this is your time to share.
I guess I'm going to direct this to Simonson because we talked about the okay, so about the bus routes. We didn't talk about it at the policy meeting last time. Would this obviously help the bus route situation if we went back to the K5? We wouldn't have to worry about the kids being shuttled and.
Yeah, that would eliminate the, the current shuttle setup that we've got, which is very confusing. And it, well, it's, I'll leave it for discussion. I've got my opinions. Rest of the board. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Andrew, you want the floor?
No, I don't care. I just think it's a good idea because siblings. I know parents sometimes struggle getting to holiday parties. It's more of a commute in the morning. You've got to run. Your youngsters to one building. Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
I would also like to say, I think there was some unintended consequences when that happened. There are many littles in a building. And I think sometimes there's not enough adults for all these littles, especially at Morse. So, and also they don't, they lost their fifth grade bus. You know, when they used to escort the younger kids to the bus, they don't have any fifth graders or fourth graders to do that. So that's, that's just, I just wanted to put that out there. I think it might be a good idea to go back to.
Would it be fair to ask one of our elementary principals to give a two cents?
Well, in a moment, it's a group discussion with the board right now. It's board discussion. So let's, let's stay with that first. And if we have a technical question, I guess we could ask the principal. Would be the fair thing to do. I, I'm going to wait at the end for my discussion or my comments. So go ahead, Jenny.
No, I also supported. I think that it was, I think that there probably was good intention behind the original thought and the original effort. I don't think it's been realized either. I think the parents don't feel like it's been realized and we had, we had educators weighing in on that survey as well. So it doesn't, it didn't seem like there was support for staying with it. And so just to throw the monkey wrench in it. Just an additional consideration, if we are switching everybody back to K5. I know that right now, Gaines has issues with the very, very low student population to the point where they don't have any classes that are single grade. All of their classes are splits, which is not fair to the teachers, the students, to anybody. So if we're going to be making changes, I think we also need to consider. And it, it might not be a fall of 26 thing that can be done right away. It might have to be a phase. Because there are facility concerns, ADA compliance with getting to some of the classrooms and some just other considerations. But I believe that we need to put that on the radar as well because I don't think that it's fair that all those kids have to be in split classes. And I don't think that the the families there or the teachers there really think that that's an ideal situation either. So just another consideration too.
So everybody had a go at Karen. You're up. Everybody said.
I'd like to hear from the educators or the building leaders. If they're.
Let's keep it a board discussion first. And then yes, we could. Yeah. I mean, we did the survey. Not against it. Okay. So my comments, because you were here, Karen, I was here. I think we were the only two here when it happened. From memory, there was four or five things said. One was is that the kids' grades would substantially go up and that was during COVID. Two is, is that we would save a half million dollars. And three is, is that there wouldn't be any problem with these buses. They had it all worked out. And I can tell because I've been here almost eight years, none of that occurred. None of that occurred. And if you don't believe me, you guys can pull the numbers. I've read numbers off to you guys a hundred times. So I'm not going to read them off a hundred and one. I will maybe next meeting, but not now. So with that being said, I guess you can see where I'm going with it. As far as educators telling us, I had a lot of calls from educators in 2001 that were afraid to come forward because they were afraid of retaliation. I'm not saying there was a whole bunch, but there was some that said, Chuck, the administration wants this. And we don't want to say anything because if we get caught saying that we don't want this, then we may, not saying they were, they may have some type of retaliation. So that's my four things. I'm leaning towards to send it back to K through five, my opinion. And some of the educators weren't even here when it got changed. My only concern is, is that how do we do it to make it more palatable for our staff and our administrators to implement it? So that's, that's my only concern. And I think we should hear from the, from some of our educators, but maybe we should have all the building principals come one day. I mean, it's a decision that, and Ken thinks we need to do it sooner than later, which I agree with him. So we can get everybody involved, but I, I kind of want to do it for the 26 year. I know I've talked to a few educators who are like, we could probably do it. Might be a problem with summer school and the, the bill, the new buildings that are going on, you know, with all the construction going on. But where there's a way, there's a will. And when we can make it happen. And I'll tell you what. Ken's already said it, 63% of the survey said that they wanted it back that way. And the other percentages, there was about, if you read that good, there's about 40% left over, 38, 39%. And half of them were strongly against that. And the other half were kind of like, we don't care. So there's your numbers. If you want to look at numbers and I'm not doing it, but we'll, we'll have a little more discussion. We have a few of our educators here that they could maybe take a couple of minutes. We can't, we can't relate this too much. It's a board decision.
Well, I don't think we have to necessarily call them up tonight, but I like your idea. We should probably have a special meeting just about this. Talking about logistics, can it even happen in 26?
What if there's committee?
What's that?
What if we do a, I know, we don't want to know. But that way we can have educators and parents like the other committees.
Get committed. We could just do a special meeting just about.
Well, once you get into implementing it.
Right.
It's, you know, when this topic was brought up once and it was a lot of backlash from the public and, and Ben, Ben backed off. And then he came back around again with it and, and that's why it's getting brought up now. There's, I've watched, when did move their buildings? And I watched our district move our buildings here. It can get done over the summer. You box your stuff up for the ones that are moving and it's moved. It, there's, there's, the bus routes existed once upon a time. Their bus routes are computer generated by where people are living every year. That's a fact. So bus routes are not that big of a deal. There's, there's nothing that any, anyone promised or said was going to happen, that has happened. And there is still people wanting it when, when we had the survey. That's why we asked. We didn't ask to ignore them. If, if, if it would have been that 30% of the people wanted to go back, I'd have never brought this up. I didn't bring this up because I care. I don't have a kid in elementary school. I care because that's what the residents have said. That's what some of the staff said. And, and to sit and start making excuses, it can't be done. No one made those excuses for Ben. Everybody's told to pack their boxes up and, and it would be moved. So it's not, I don't even want to go down that path. Either say no, which is fine. But don't make excuses because there are no excuses. No one made excuses when they had, when, when anyone had to move four or five years ago. Farrell spoke and it, it happened.
Nobody was making excuses.
Well, they were though, because they were talking about bus routes and you're talking about, was there enough time?
No, I said, this is going to help our bus route.
Correct. But I'm saying that the bus routes became a topic. Is there time? Yes, there's time. You, you have, you have from time, school starts right now. If you made a decision in December, you have nine months. You can have a baby. I think you can pack up some boxes and move them. I mean, that's, that's not, you know, no, I, I watched them doing it, Linda. They packed their boxes up there into May, first of June. Over the summer they were moved and they were brought back into the room, just like it happened here. And I'm sure there was people that didn't like it then. And there probably will be a few that don't like it now. But it, it has not saved the district money. It has not increased our test scores. Those are facts.
And like.
So I was, I just want to ask you, for the industry school of choice, when does that have to be turned in? Cause I imagine there, there's probably going to be some. If we make any changes like this, there's going to be some people that are like, well, I thought I was going to be at Morse and I really want to stay at Morse. What, what's the cutoff for them?
April, if I'm not mistaken, March, April.
Okay. So we just need to make sure.
We discuss it in March and then we vote on it, I believe in early April.
Okay.
From what we did this year.
So we want to make sure that we have.
Well, yeah, I mean, some school of choice kids will be, will be changed around. I don't, I don't have.
And again, let's go, let's go back to four or five years ago. Were those people who asked them?
That might even.
Well, did, did, did Ben, did Ben take that into consideration? No, you did it.
But like right now, you've got some, so you can't be a kindergartner at Elms. But if we go back, you could be a kindergartner. But so, yeah, I just want to make sure that if we're making a decision for 26, we haven't already like.
You might even. You might even increase gains.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, in reality, it, it now is the time to do it because you might increase gains. Where some kids are like, well, this is a little too crowded at Elms or Morse, which are on the east side of our district and you may increase gains. I don't even know if it wasn't done that. You know, there was a lot of politics going on and I fought to keep Gaines open for the last several years. And I don't know, some bus routes were changed and you correct me if I'm wrong, Jim. Over the last seven years, I, I mean, I know it's hard to put you in spot, but RC changed some bus routes with Ben. Not drastically, but there were some bus routes changed because the subdivision I lived in, some kids were moved out of my subdivision to Cyrene versus Gaines. So.
That started before then, Chuck. That started.
Yeah. Well, yeah, they've always been doing it every year.
That started back in 15 when, when Hall tried to close Gaines in 16.
Yeah. They, they, I'm saying they, they made the numbers a little bit, but let's not talk about what they did in the past. Let's talk about what we're going to do in the future.
Well, but, but, but the moving end of it, we do have to talk about the past because apparently there was zero hiccups.
Well, the teachers, I had a lot of teachers call me that were against it, that were complaining. I'm sure.
Well, I'm talking about the actual way. I'm talking about the actual physical move.
No, that's what I said. I had a lot of teachers call me. Said there was a little issue. But I think if we plan for it, then we have a lot of talented staff.
Then we know what our mistakes are and let's correct them.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you send out another survey to the teachers, what went wrong with your move? And ask them, what can we do to make this smoother?
Well, we want it as smooth as can be if it happens. And, and we, and there is going to be some schools closed for construction. So we have to be sensitive for that. And we may have to pay for a little bit of storage. If we run out of, you know, you know, I don't, I don't want to knock out our summer schools or do anything. Because Deke is having major construction in the summer.
They used to hold summer school at the middle school.
No, not in the gym. No.
I, I found your storage space.
Oh, storage space. Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking of all things and that's why it's a good idea. We're talking about it now. Okay. I agree with you.
And five years ago, I was detached from the process.
You were, you were actually, you were actually.
Beautiful for me, but I, I would strongly recommend, I don't know exactly where our staff stands on this, but I would strongly encourage us to have a meeting with them to get some feedback. They're going to be the ones that are the boots on the ground packing things up. Ideally.
I want them involved.
I would say like, do it for the fall of 27. But if you want to move fast, I say get them involved. They can.
That's not, no, no, that, that's again, that's kicking the can down the road. That's not what, that's not what Ben did. He made a decision and it was put in, it was put in motion. It's every time we do something on the school board, it's kick the can down the road. Stop kicking the can down the road. He didn't kick it. When he wanted something, boom, we did it.
Yeah. I, I, I recommend to do it right. Give it time. It may be in the fall. I'm not sure. But I say if we meet with that group and say, can we do this? What does it look like? They're the best planners for this. It may, I mean, it may be in the fall. Our committee are talking about our principals, some of the staff that are going to be involved in this, in the.
It would be probably Bill Loder, the staff, the principals.
Yes. They could prep, they could plan in a committee for sure.
How did they do it? How did they pack up the last time?
Right.
No one, no one gave them any, any.
Michelle lived it. Well, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to call up here at the end of our discussion.
Again, again.
Hold on.
No, hang on a minute. Again, they can tell us what went wrong the last time and we can correct it.
Right.
Yeah.
But we'll correct it. We're not going to stop it.
Right.
And if it takes us, if it takes us 18 months to fix it, we need to hire some different people to do our moving because people move a whole house in a weekend. You know, I, again.
Can I, can I ask one?
Stop with excuses.
Can I, can I ask a question to Jim and then Michelle and Travis? I'm actually going to have you come up. Travis, are you awake back there? Um, my concern is when the new furniture comes in, I would like to coordinate that. So all the furniture doesn't get beat up for the classrooms. Cause we're spending so much money on classrooms and teachers' equipment. And I think that we should have some type of a, maybe not a, a full blown meeting, but a workshop so we can get that information to make it happen. Does that make sense? But if, if you want to, you want to do it now, you make the motion.
I don't want to do it tonight. I'll give everyone a minute to chew on it. And I would like to hear from the building principals that were here at the time of what went right and what went wrong.
Is it okay if we bring Michelle up for a moment? Michelle, please come up and give us three minutes or less.
Literally always.
If you could, I know it's tough, but.
Tick tock, tick tock, tick tock.
All right. So what I need to refresh everyone's memory is that when we moved and did the reconfiguration, it was also during the pandemic and we didn't have things going on in the, the whole, you know, there wasn't even school. That whole springtime and that whole summer, there wasn't summer school going on. We employed all of our aides and custodians and all the support staff to come in and help pack the classrooms and help move everything because they needed to make money, you know, they were, you know, not able to do their normal jobs. So we had people come in and we had to do it very carefully and not too many people and not close together and all of that. But we were able to do what we did with existing staff because of the pandemic. So yes, you can, you can do anything if you want to spend enough money. That's you. We can hire moving companies. We're going to have to buy a lot of boxes, hire a lot of companies to come in and help us. Cause our own custodial staff and our own maintenance and so forth, they work hard and long hours all summer long, just to do the normal maintenance and cleaning and so forth. So if you're going to add all of this on top, it will need to be, you know, outside contracted help. There were a lot of things that were not done well in the last reconfiguration. It was not thought through with all the details. For example, coat hooks. We, we got back to school and all the coat hooks were too high at the K2s and too low at the three fives. And so you know, the maintenance guys had to go around and move all the coat hooks to the proper, I mean, that's just one small detail among hundreds of details that will have to be discussed and worked out. So that's, that's it. And then the other thing is if you do things with people instead of to them or for them, they're much more likely to have buy-in and ownership. So your families and your community, you know, well, they might say, yes, we want K5. The chances that you all are going to like arbitrarily draw the, redraw the lines and everything go the, without making people unhappy is not really. It's, it's not a great option. I think that the committee idea involving people in talking this through on and, and looking at like, how can we redistribute so more people will be in the Gaines area to make that a viable option. If we're going to commit to having all five buildings open and have that expense, then we need to divide it up instead of having Morse and Elms be so overcrowded and Gaines sitting half empty, you know, there's some moving around and and our staff and our families, if they're not involved in that discussion, if they're not part of that planning, they're not going to be happy. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Uh, just one quick question though, my memory is failing me a little bit, but I thought we voted on that. Uh, just one quick question, though. My memory is failing me a little bit, but I thought we voted on that over Zoom, and that would have been in January of 2021. And then we brought the kids back at the tail end of 21, didn't we? Or no, we didn't?
I think Michelle is pretty close to right. It was, it was toward the end of the school year. We had gone out in March.
And we came back the following.
We came back the following.
No, August.
The kids were out.
We started back in August.
Exactly.
We, we went out at, at Thanksgiving for a short time and went through Christmas that year. It was the second outage, but that March was the.
And actually, our opening of school got pushed back after Labor Day because I remember it was one of the few Labor Day weekends I had to work because Cyrene in order to, we couldn't get into Cyrene because between the construction for the bond and all the moving and stuff, it wasn't inspected. We weren't cleared to enter the building until Labor Day weekend. So literally, my educators had to come in on Labor Day weekend to set their classrooms up is when we had to do it.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully.
Oh, I. I did, I did forget one piece two. We would not be able to run summer school because the middle school and the high school, if you were in the committees, they're tearing out the ceilings, they're, they're putting in new lights, they're moving all the furniture. That, that's why the company is hiring a moving company for the high school and the middle.
I got a great idea. We'll have summer school at Gaines. Because that's already configured. I've already solved that problem for you. There you go. I thought about it when we talked about the committee meeting.
Okay.
That would actually work. They want summer school, Gaines is open, fully functional, and they don't put any money into Gaines, which we're going to start doing. So thank you.
Middle school and high school is going to be.
Hey, we just solved that one. Thank you, Michelle. But I think we'll have a, a, a small, uh, we do it as a workshop or should we do it as an open board workshop?
Yeah, workshop or committee.
Yeah, I, I think that would be better, and then we'll get all the department heads and the principals and the elementaries. And who else would you suggest? Does anybody have any other suggestions?
Well, if it's open, anybody can come.
I don't want anybody to come, but.
Bill and facilities.
Yeah.
I have a question.
I'm going to. And the bus people. I want the, the garage people in there. Okay. All right. Well, that's discussed. What do you want to do?
Well, some, some of that, you're discussing, going back to the previous boundaries for these schools. That was four years ago. You're not reinventing the wheel.
Right.
You know, the kids that lived in Deke four years ago will go to Deke. This, this isn't.
It's not rocket scientists. I know.
Right. And, and I, and I will, and I will go back and refresh my memory, and I think you're also talking to Russ, Michelle. Maybe ask him, but that was, that was a pretty smooth operation over at Linden. And they did three buildings because they went to, they went to K, K three buildings and one, four, or five building. They, they packed, they packed before they ever left that school year. They were all nice Home Depot or, I don't know if they were Home Depot or U-Haul boxes. I don't really recall. But there was stacks of them and they could make them. It, it, it went fairly smooth. How it went in the summer, I don't know.
Okay. All right, enough discussion on that. Any other?
Do we want to do anything? Do we want to try to make a motion saying that we're.
I mean, if you make a motion, if it gets seconded, it gets.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if, if we make a motion now, then when we schedule the subcommittee or whatever, then we're planning and it's not, yeah.
Yeah, so, all right, so I want to make a motion. I want to make a motion that for the fall of 2026, as long as it's deemed feasible by the committee, um, and there's no, no outstanding issues that we return the elementary schools that have switched from the split configuration back to all being K five elementary school buildings.
So the motion is for the fall of 26 to move back to K five. We'll have a subcommittee meeting on it with all interested parties. And what was the last part of your motion? I'm just rereading.
Um, just that if, if the committee comes back and says that there's, absolutely can't make that, that, you know, we take their, that under consideration. I don't think that they will. I'm just saying, if there, if there's some. You know.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Winters. Further discussion on this? No further discussion? Okay, Sue, I'm going to try to restate it, or did you write it all down for me?
I'm working on it.
I'm sorry.
I have for the fall 2026, move back to K five if the committee comes back and says they can do it. It can be done.
No, we're going to unwind.
Yeah, unless, unless there's some outstanding committee that says there's some outstanding reason why they can't. Well, I shouldn't say the committee that the, yeah, it'd be a committee of board members. And the staff is going to. Right. Is there a second?
Maybe we have Ben come back and lead it.
What's that?
So maybe we have Ben come back and lead it.
And was seconded by Ms. Winters. Any further discussion?
Okay. I'm going to read it again. For the fall 2026, move back to K five unless they come back with a recommendation, it is to be delayed.
They mean the committee.
The committee.
The committee.
Who's the committee, though? We don't know who the committee is.
I'm thinking scratch that. You can always go back and revisit it and amend it if need be.
Well, the, the motion's on the floor. You have a choice to, she has a choice to withdraw her motion or involve some type of parliamentary procedure. Or we could vote on it. It could die in voting process.
That's okay. I'll withdraw. So and then can I restate it just saying, okay, so.
Is there support? Yeah. Well, you withdrew your motion. You're, yeah, so you're fine. Underneath parliamentary procedure.
Okay, so my new motion is that we return the elementary schools to K five configuration for the fall of 2026 school year. Support.
Who supported? I'm sorry.
Andrea.
Andrea, I'm sorry. I didn't, I couldn't hear because his face was that red. Okay. Any further discussion? None. I don't think we need a roll call vote, but go ahead and do the roll call votes. Please.
One moment.
Yes, ma'am.
That was moved by Jenny and supported by Andrea. Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Tim Winter.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Chuck Melkey.
Yes.
Jenny Woggas.
Yes.
Ken Engel.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay. Now, based on that, motion passes. Jim, would you please set up a board workshop slash a committee of your and our cabinet staff and anybody else that you think needs to come in to assist in this?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you just, you, you make the date, and then we'll all get with Sue's calendar and see what we can do and do a, a hour or two meeting right in this boardroom with our, our upper level administrators, principals, anybody that wants to really come. Um, and then.
Now, we avoid these days.
Yeah, just, just tell them that. We're not going to set the dates now. Just, you'll work it out. It doesn't need to be done in a board discussion here. As long as he puts it out. That follows the letter. Is you okay with that, Jim? Yeah, just pick two or three dates and see what the board can accommodate. They have most of us here. And then your cabinet members and your upper echelon staff. And I want teachers here. I want to hear what they have to say. And I want to be able to, you know, so we can, how is this going to happen? And we need your input to make it as smooth as. I'm sorry, Jenny. Oh, yeah.
I have a great idea when we get to it on how to move all this because instead of paying for superintendent transportation, we have $30,000 we can use for that.
There you go. I like the way you think.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss that later. Thank you.
Nice.
Mary Creeple Ball Field grand opening. I put this one on. I wanted to do it in November. We had some scheduling problems. Um, I don't have a problem with having two openings, but the public's been waiting for some time. I think that we owe it to them. It may be a little cooler out, but I think people are anxious. It looks good. Um, I saw the kids out there playing the other day. I was real happy with that. So I would like to move it an hour and a half before our next meeting. Hour and 20 minutes. Have a grand opening and then have another opening that Jim would like in the summer. And then have a place picked out for our plaque and where we're going to put it. At least, can we do that? No, no, this, 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 December.
Yeah, December time.
Oh, is that the date?
Yeah.
Oh.
December 10th?
Yes.
Yes. Um, there is a chance that there could be a discipline at five o'clock that day. But we could start it at 3:30.
You and 3:30 to five. Yeah, that's right.
No, I've worked late.
That's like bust.
That's, I'm not out of work yet.
That's, that's a bad time.
Okay, we'll do it. We'll do it this way as a suggestion. We'll do the grand opening at 5:00 PM. If we have a discipline error here, we'll do that from six to seven, and we'll move the board meeting back from seven to nine. That's pretty simple.
Five to six for open house? Yes.
Uh, we want, we, yeah, and donuts and for me and Ken, cider and coffee. I'm not, I'm not, I know it sounds funny, but I would like that. I mean, we've got a few, few hundred bucks. We can buy some coffee, some cider.
Yes.
Yes.
No, that's.
It's Wednesday night.
But that, that's a suggestion. So I'd like somebody to make a motion, and then we'll move on.
Oh. Um.
That's, that's 5:00 PM.
Five o'clock.
Grand.
Grand opening. Mary Creeple. Mary Creeple Park. Okay.
We all need to get a good.
You're just trying to go past nine o'clock. Let's move it.
Uh, Mary Creeple Field of Dreams. Designed by Jim Kitchen.
All right, all right.
It got donuts, cider, and we have a high school fan there. And I would like to hope that we have baseball players and coaches.
Where we want to be, the, the public's been chomping at the bit.
Wait, can you start over? I think she lost.
Let's get some control here. The, the motion states.
The motion to have.
Just to have it on.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Been seconded by Autumn Henry. The motion reads, on December 10th, we'll have a grand opening uh, at Mary Creeple with all the little details we'll put in there, and it'll be at 5:00 PM, and we hope that the public comes. But that's, that's, I scratch ass. It was just a motion. So with that being said, any discussion? Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Cern is what if there's snow on the ground? Still go for it?
Yes.
Yes.
Bring your ice skates.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote. Sue, go ahead.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine. Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Chuck Melkey.
Yes.
Jenny Woggas.
Yes.
Ken Engel.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Next discussion item is administration positions. Restructuring.
This was a, this was another topic that you guys can blame me for. I brought it up to Chuck to go on here. Uh, just an idea, so something I noticed when I got back on the school board, we created a lot of new positions in the administration office. I'm not going to debate with anyone whether they're needed or unneeded. We also know that I'm assuming because it's said, uh, our current actual person holding the position, assistant superintendent, would be Jim. He's interim superintendent, the deputy or assistant. So, so Chuck talked about eliminating that position. Jim's retiring. We wouldn't need to fill it. Go back to his HR position. I think there's a lot of positions created here that, that could save the district some money. And again, I don't like to go back in the past, but our enrollment is less than what it once was. And when I, when I first started on, on the board in 11, if you carry your pulse like this, we had a superintendent and a gentleman at HR and finance. Well, we operated for years like that before I got here back. And we had a curriculum specialist or assistant superintendent. I don't remember what Lauren's title was. Carrie, you remember what her title was? It was either director or assist.
Assistant superintendent.
Okay, assistant superintendent over curriculum. So I'm not, I'm not asking you to go back to something that civil again, but I do think we have an opportunity with the position becoming vacant to eliminate that position. I don't know why it was traded. I don't, you know, there's been, like I said, there's been several positions traded. And our enrollments went down. I think our actual staff probably went down. And yet the central office has grown and grown and grown. So that's just, just, you know, a thought. And again, for more discussion, I'm not asking we move on that thing tonight on this, but just the discussion, maybe it's something the annual meeting with the chairman gave Michelle that. But again, I, I think this is the ideal time. We're not harrowing anybody while we're laying anyone off at this point in time. Unless Jim decides to stay. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
No, that's all right.
But, but I think this is an ideal opportunity if things go according to the, the current feelers. If anyone else has any thoughts shared, good idea, bad idea, terrible idea?
So, I mean, I think that we definitely need to have a good feel for what positions are currently out there and job descriptions and, and things like that before we determine, okay, this one isn't necessary. Because we just started saying, okay, we don't need this role anymore. We need to make sure that the, the responsibilities currently assigned to that role can be reallocated without overworking or overburdening other staff. Um, so we definitely need to look at that. And then my second thought is, is we're going to be bringing in a new superintendent. Yes, we have, you know, we make some decisions, but I would hope that that would be a discussion and a decision made with the cooperation of the superintendent. So if we know that we've got somebody that's going to be coming in, they might have their own ideas. They might be on, on board with you, Ken. They might look at our, our org chart and say, yeah, we need to have, you know, we, we only have these people. You know, but I think that they, if we know that we're going to be bringing in somebody different into that role, um, we should at least consider whether we want to try to get their input into restructuring. That's just my thought.
I can say something that might be helpful is, so currently we are now a whole person because when Rod is gone, Dave is basically doing deputy and HR. Right now, the way we're set up, we look like flushing. It's set up where I would recommend keeping the deputy superintendent, but they take on HR responsibilities. Um, they could man operations, that kind of thing. It would basically just be keeping the positions as they are now. That would be a reduction of a whole person and still have someone who's capable to step in for the superintendent and still cover HR and all the other.
Why couldn't we just spell that out into a policy, I guess, and still call it HR? But like, you know, when the superintendent is out, this person becomes a designated. I see that word used a lot in our policy. For things, I guess.
I have a question. Um, is, I know when Mr. Heatherton was here, before he became superintendent, he was, um, I kind of call him deputy super or assistant superintendent of curriculum. Is there a difference between that person and the deputy superintendent?
Yes, the way that we're set up. Basically, the deputy is able to do anything that the superintendent can in his absence. Um, for my role, it's been to lead, when I was deputy, lead the principal meetings, the professional development with that. Discipline, those student issues, heading up operation and, um, like the head person of like nutrition and those others, they all have directors. But basically, you're kind of heading up those positions, evaluation of principals. Um, so that would be the role of the, of the deputy.
Okay, and we have a director of curriculum now. So we don't.
That's a great idea.
I have a flowchart from four years ago or five years ago, and we've added two administrative positions. We never had a human resource director. We didn't have a full-time curriculum director. As Jim said, they were bifurled in with two other people. So somebody had two, two headings, basically. And at one time, I believe that one person had like three or four headings, curriculum director, you know, and then deputy assistant superintendent. And we didn't have a. And we didn't have a human resource director because we hired Michelle Dexter, if you recall, right before. We never had one. I don't know who's been on the board. Carrie's been on the board the longest.
We had Colleen and we had Christie.
Yeah.
There's been someone in the position, but.
But they weren't called that. We added Michelle and they worked underneath her. They worked underneath her, if you look.
Well, they weren't here. Colleen and, um, Christie weren't here.
How many people were in human resource? When you were the human resource director, which you still are, how many people worked for you?
I've got, uh, two.
Okay. Well. I know we hired a full-time human resource.
Yeah, yes.
Ben, Ben did that right before he left and he added somebody else and he added Michelle Corbett as the, uh. I don't know what her job title actually is. Uh, media coordinator?
She is now media.
Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Well, what is it when she hired her? She was in charge of the internet or the, uh.
She's our social media person, yeah.
Right. Okay. Well, maybe we should just look, talk about like Ken said, and look at a flow chart and see where we're at.
Yeah.
See how many staff. It's based on how many staff that work for you really, so.
And you have another item coming up, and I guess this is a great precursor, but from the time that Jim Boil was here and had those duties, um, grants or have been exponential. There's lots of work that's, has to be done with grants that was not done by the business office at that time.
Okay. Yeah, I see that on our.
Chuck, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I tend to agree with Jenny. In less than two months, we are going to be looking at a superintendent. And part of their role is to build the, the cabinet and the talent around them. And to assess what we currently have in areas where we may have deficits. Um, or excess. So I would, I would agree with Jenny that, you know. We could, we could likely wait until that person's on board.
Yeah.
To have them do that assessment.
I think that, that's not a, a horrible argument. That's probably a, a, a good suggestion. I think Ken just wanted to bring it up to see where we're at when we're in a transition period here. We've added positions, subtracted positions. I'm not in any way or form against the super, working with the new superintendent to figure that out. Although it's really their responsibility. We control the purse strings. I mean. We used to say that to sheriff's office all the time. We want all these positions. County board commissioner, well, we cut the million dollars out of your budget and then you had to do what? I don't want to get to that point. I would rather work with everybody and try to figure it out. And those are both good suggestions. And I'll leave the floor to Ken.
Oh, I was just gonna say. But then we have the superintendent telling us what to do, or we're supposed to guide them. Like, that. That's my thing. If they need something, obviously. Provide it, but, or, you know.
Well, they're gonna request.
Yeah, make your informed decision, but at the same time. You gotta do what you gotta do to stay.
Yeah, and I just meant it more as get their input, not take whatever they say and, and sign it into a proposal. I just said, at least get their input and their ideas. For how they would like to have things structured.
So by the next meeting? Maybe by January, where we're organizing, can we get a flow chart of all the people? So as we're interviewing new superintendents, we can have that conversation with them.
I say.
Their staff.
Yeah, that's a great idea. The other, like I said, the reason I brought it up was. To me, this was an ideal time. That position was going to be vacant.
Mm-hmm.
Or I'm assuming it's going to have been vacant from what Jim has said. So. That's part of it. And again, and I'm not saying on this topic, we're kicking the can down the road. But the very next thing we're going to be talking about is the budget. So if we kick the can down the road till April, then the next day, well, well, you know, wait, we've already got the budget. And then we're going to vote on that at the end of June. So again. You know, let's start talking about these things in January and February and not talk about them in April and May. When, you know, we, we always wind up where, well, we can't do it. It's too late or we have to hurry.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so that's why I'm bringing it up now. There, there's two reasons. And, and, and I'm not saying it's a good idea, a bad idea. But we've already kicked the can down the road to April. And, and, and not that I, and not that I want to control what the superintendent does or doesn't. But maybe he or she would want to know what our vision of this is. And, and like I said, I don't, I'm not trying to say go back to two thousand and eleven for central office. I think that's ridiculous. We do have things there, uh, that, you know, Jim should have never been forced, not this Jim, Mr. Boil. Mr. Boil should have never been forced to probably do both of those tasks. You know, the gentleman out at Linden did that as well. And now they have two people doing it. So I, I do think those tasks should be separated from finance and H R. You know, they're, they're both very timely. Um, oh, to, to me, you know, whether you like Jim or not. Jim, Jim, what we paid him to do two jobs like that was a gift. Um, now you might not like this personality that went with it, but the fact that he did those two positions was a gift. I don't think any of the current administrators would want to do both of those. So, you know, you look back on it now and you're like, ah, that guy had his hands full. So I don't want to go back to that. That's not, that's not the suggestion at all. It's just, there is a, there is a timing thing here. So we'll get the flow chart and, and make sure we have it for the interviews. And, you know, we might even dream up some of our own questions. Thanks. Okay, uh, any other discussion on that line item? Okay, good. Thank you, Ken. Uh, next one is cage easement field house request. I briefly went over this on, um, my building report. So if you like, uh, Jim, uh, Al Jory has presented this to us.
Yes.
You could explain it or I can explain. It's up to you.
Well, I'm sure you'd do a better job explaining with the construction piece, but, um, what, what I'll share is basically the retention ponds that are there. They want to team with us. Next to the cage, there's a piece of land that's for sale and they're anticipating it could be, um, some kind of strip mall, a dollar store. And so they, they wanted, they want us to be able to go in with them with the retention pond. There'd be no cost to the district. Um, and then they also would like for us to move our drive. It's the north drive there. Um, so there'd be a little piece of that taken out where they would bump it down and move it. And Chuck, correct me if I'm not saying this right, but.
You're, you're, you're going, you're doing good.
Um, the only piece.
We're gonna get a Pizza Hut though. I'm happy about that.
Pizza Hut would be great. Um, and I did have someone, uh, so basically French just recently with a couple of questions on it. And that we have to consider. And you do have a diagram of the recommendation in here. Uh, a couple of the concerns that came up as we're talking about it is, is it going to create extra congestion with, you know, Pizza Hut and the cage using that same right across from, uh, Meyer? And then also, we're not sure what the county is going to say or do about the retention ponds being lined up like that. So there's probably going to be some additional costs with that. But again, when it was presented to us, it was at no cost. Uh, to the district. A little frustration. We just finished that lot. It's beautiful. But this, um, but they do claim that it'll be equally beautiful and no cost. And, uh, we'd be able to share the storm drain, so.
I, I think Jim had it accurate. This script some of, but the, the, I believe the driveway that they're proposing turn out to be old driveway.
Yes.
So where the northern part of the driveway is at of the cage, they want to block that in. They'll put the four extra spots that we're losing going north on the lot and, you know, everybody has a bit, our businesses in Flynn Township. They have those service drives that run along the road because they can't have a driveway every forty feet on a busy road. So alls they're gonna do is, is plug that driveway. Make it pretty. Open it up to the north. You'll drive into the new plaza, which we'll have, and then that drive will be there because there's no way they're gonna have two driveways sitting next to each other. On Morris Road. So I think our people will still have as much access in and out, egress, ingress. But at the end of the day, my concern is, is like Jim's, I don't want nothing altered that's going to cost us any money. Or make it look ugly because we just spent all that money in fixing it. And, uh.
You get this.
I'll just, I've known, I've known Al Jory and his family for forty-five years, fifty years in Schwartz Creek. He's actually not doing it. He's gonna do the development. He's doing it for a developer. And the cost is going to be put onto them. But I don't want this board agreeing to anything unless Throon looks at it. Signs off and says, no, because I don't want to put one nickel in for a private business. Um, and I think that that is reasonable. And they're gonna, they will actually maybe save us money in the long run. Because my question, that building and operations, where if they're gonna dump the water from their parking lot. Into our retention ponds, thanks for reminding me earlier. And something happens to our retention pond, as the water goes out, I believe to Coal Creek, that's the creek that it dumps into. Who's gonna pay for that? And they said the developer would. So if something happened to our pipes between our retention ponds going to Coal Creek. Then they're still gonna take that burden. It's not, which one is it? I don't know. Okay. I'm sorry?
Mister Gay.
Okay. I didn't know that. That was cold.
Now you do.
Okay. I staying correct? Point of order. Thank you. So with that being said, I don't know what the board's pleasure is, but Al wanted a comment from us. I suggested that we send it to full board. So you guys can look at it and decide if we can even go through with it. To get the first base, we gotta have attorney talk. Both of them get together. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Is there a warranty on the recently completed parking lot?
One year, I believe Jamie said.
So if there was any.
Yeah, one year.
If there was any work done on it, would we invalidate that warranty at all?
I think the work that he's doing carries at the very tip of the north end where that driveway is at. So I think a stipulation would be that you're not going to drive our new parking lot. And tear up our stuff. I mean, that could be put in the attorney talk agreement.
Does the drain commissioner have to be involved?
Yeah, they're gonna have to approve it eventually.
Yes.
So this is all hypothetical, but Al can't get all this done. Till we say it's okay because he's not going to spend fifty thousand dollars in attorney talk and all this other stuff. To get it done if we say no. So we either have to say, yes, you can explore it and do it. Or no, you can't. We still gonna have the final vote on yes or no because it'll come down to the attorney talk. And one other thing was, uh, what did I forget, Jim, in that?
I don't think you forgot.
The only. The only issue I had with that, Chuck, was. Oh, they have to bond it. They're gonna have to bond it. They're gonna have to insure it. There's no way they can work in the road right ways without buying and insuring. I'm just trying to get, now I'm putting on the construction hat versus this hat. Um. And the north part of the parking lot is our least used part, and there's no access except out of that driveway. And our driveway is part of park. That's why they need the drive. And if they do, it's gonna bring in a couple of million dollars in tax base to the district and the city.
So do you know anything about this plaza?
Yeah, I don't like it because I don't know what's going in there. Same thing. I'm gonna just keep it existing.
It can't be a, a topless joint. It can't be a marijuana plant.
Doesn't matter, but is there already some?
No, there's a developer that, that, what he said was wants to put in a strip mall. They gave four examples or four stores that are interested that want to do it. Pizza Hut, Smoothie Cafe, Jimmy John's.
We got locals.
Well, but they would be right next to the cage, so any events that are there instead of having to go further. They, it would be right next door. So you have anthems there. They can just walk over.
I think it'd be good for the kids to actually, if they don't go grab a sandwich or a shake or something. I don't know.
Yeah.
The only, the only issue I had, I had with it was. The possible litigation down the road with the agreement of anything to do with the ponds. Um, because the people we're making the deal with aren't necessarily the people that are gonna own it in a year, five years or ten years.
Right.
So we're playing Monty Hall with one guy. But in a few years, we might be invested with a different guy. The other issue I had with it was that piece of property is useless to them. Um, because of this retention pond, so. Whoever's purchased it. Their problem's now our problem.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I don't, I don't know that that's our problem. I don't, I don't have a problem with the businesses being there. They would be very beneficial. But. But that, I mean, he was very clear. You can't build on that property unless we give up part of our retention pond. Or use, excuse me.
To the retention pond.
And, and, yes, and then the opening, we also discussed that that becomes a traffic issue. Who's gonna, who's gonna pay for the traffic light? At the, at the entrance to Meyer and, uh, Morris Road.
So they're gonna put another one?
No, 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 no.
Kinda makes sense.
But it, it could happen.
Yeah.
And so my question was, we just, we just did that at the corner of Bristol and Morris with, uh, the city of Schwartz Creek. Clayton Township did. And traffic lights are easy to put up. They're outrageous to maintain and operate. And so that's, that's, you know, again, is their problem gonna become our problem? You know, is it gonna become Meyer's problem? Who, who, if, if these things happen, these are just things that are, are, are talking points of, if a traffic light goes up, who's responsible for it? It, you know, because when we, when they did the survey at Bristol and Morris. What the county did came back as a four-way stop. It wasn't a traffic light. That's, it came back as suggested as a four-way stop.
Yeah, and I don't want a congested spot right there because how many of the kids are young that drive to practice at the cage field house and how, like, I just don't.
Well, the other drive.
I don't.
We just made that south drive, so that one's still gonna be there.
Yeah.
So that's still gonna be like a dedicated drive.
Yeah.
So depending on where you're coming from, you won't even have to.
But if there's a plaza there, you know what I mean? Plus all the Meyer traffic that already has, I mean, you got people coming from.
Yeah.
Uh, what is it? West of here coming in.
I just. I, I just don't want to get, I just don't down the, down the road want to get into another legal dispute. So I, I, I think however we draft this up. You know, we've got to talk about these, these points. Um, that could potentially be issues. Because like I said, who we're making the deal with is not who we may deal with later. That's my, that, and, and again, we're leaving a problem for, you know, the, the next board or the next superintendent. So it, not saying at all it's a bad idea. Another thing I would like him to do, and if he has to spend some money, that's his issue. Is he needs a better drawing. That drawing, that drawing he brought was horrible. It, it, it looked like I did it because I can't draw. And, and, uh, that drawing was horrible to, to bring to somebody and ask for something. That drawing was horrible. So.
Before we even would consider taking it to the lawyer, we've got to get with the drain commission, road commission, like, you know, if it's not even feasible, why would?
That's already costing us money, like taking it to all those places. Yeah, I don't like it. I don't like it.
Point of order, point of order. That's not what he said.
No, we're actually agreeing for once.
No, no. You guys, okay, I'm just gonna say it. And Carrie was there and Jim was there. Point of order. He said that he would incur all the costs.
Yes.
For all that. So you guys are putting words in somebody's mouth.
No, he did say.
Hold on, let's, let's just talk about, yeah, he did. And Ken, that's, 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 yeah, he did. And Jenny was there. He said that he would incur all the attorney's costs for the district. He would incur all the costs for any development. He would incur all the costs. And to get there, that's why you gotta have an attorney draw up, and he would also pay for our attorney costs.
Chuck, I want to make sure, I'm gonna repeat.
Yeah.
Warranty, warranty, warranty. If there's a warranty, we need to know who is, is responsible for that. And if we were to violate that, what that would cost. We don't even know.
That's why we have to send the.
The.
Agreed.
The current parking.
Well, if it's only a one-year warranty, he's, he would have to like start it immediately. It sounds like there are plans for that.
So, well, he's gotta get all kind of approval.
Yeah, he, I know, it's whatever the board's pleasure is. I, I don't think he can, I don't think he can do anything for a year. But. And, and as far as the water easements go, when you sign in an easement for water. It goes with the deed. So it doesn't matter if whoever goes in there tomorrow, I know this because I had these problems in several of the businesses I've owned in the township. I've got an easement to the old Sears Roebuck Furniture Store, if anybody remembers that. For water right of waste and drive-through because it's a, it's a lifetime easement. So when the owner transfers it. That deed shows the easement in there. So I, I, I think we're talking things.
Yeah.
That aren't gonna hap, well, I mean, that's why you want to send the attorney. Don't believe Chuck sent it to the attorney.
No, it's not. No, no, that's. On Linden Road. I mean, the driveway we bought an easement for.
Right, and, and, and you sold it to the mega site or the church sold it to the mega site.
But we still have our.
That's perfect. You just answered my question.
No, but.
You have that. My, my statement is, is that, you should know this as a real estate agent. When you sell property and you sell property and this property sold and this guy has an easement. That goes with the new property owner. They just can't say, I don't recognize.
Nobody said that wasn't a thing.
That's what they said down there. They said it down there. What I, what I said was, I don't look for future, I don't look forward to future litigation over. I don't want it for the district.
I just want to know what would be going in next door to our gym before I go ahead because I'm not gonna be a hypocrite.
Like, well, it's still school property, so it'd have to be, like, nothing that can't be near school property. They did tell us that.
Uh, we did. Another topic.
Yeah, I, I would still.
The marijuana.
I'd like more.
It's entertainment facility. Yeah. Where education is actually taking place. So that was another topic that. What's, what's the pleasure of the board? I, I'll, I'll call it. I don't care.
Anything with this right now.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of questions to be asked and.
Yeah, let's get some of our questions.
Phone call to call the drain commissioner, road commissioner.
Yeah, I have Bill on, I have Bill on. Bill is looking into the retention pond. If that's gonna be an issue, I can send it off.
I have no issue with it. What, what's the pleasure of the board?
Back to my original.
Next month?
My original comment was just like, let's make some calls. My original comment was just like, let's make some calls before anyone spends, I don't care who's paying for the lawyer, no one should spend money on a lawyer when we can make simple phone calls. That's all I was trying to say, that went off the rails.
Yeah, yeah, I want that in the minutes, I want that in the minutes. That's official record, what did, what did she say?
Okay, that's enough discussion on cage easement. Everybody agreeing, we'll, we'll let Bill do his research. Uh, business office specialist grant coordinator.
Can we table that one too when we talk about the other-
Well, it's a board discussion item.
Thing, oh. Or no?
We already discussed a person, so it's a board discussion item. Floor is open.
Yeah. Some, so this is the position that we're requesting for a, a grant coordinator. Um, I can have, Michelle's back there to come up, but I don't know if she's- All right, yeah, so this would be, the grants are huge now, more than they've ever been, and it would be beautiful to have someone that just focuses on grants. There, there, a lot of grants do have the ability for us to pay for some of the administrative costs with them, uh, but we are requesting that we add a specialist grant coordinator to help our business department and curriculum.
Previously Kevin did a lot of that work, didn't he?
Yes.
So one of the things that I, that I asked Michelle, and she, because she put this up, um, for us to look at, um, at the end of the finance committee. Um, so if you look at this, like the, the rate of pay for this particular position, um, compared to the rate of pay. So right now, Michelle, Paul, and, uh, Jamie are handling this work, and so their rate of pay is significantly different than the rate of pay for this particular position. So we're, we're paying a lot of salary, um, to do more of this kind of clerical work, where if we could shift all this clerical work and have somebody just focus on it, and we're not paying them an elevated salary for doing the work, I mean.
Yeah, this, well, this leads me back to the, how many grants do we apply for in a year?
So Michelle could bring, you know, she can answer that one.
Over fifty because?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there, and there might be more that we're missing. So if we had somebody dedicated that could be researching it and following up on all these, all the little things that obviously Michelle and Jamie are not able to, just because they have other responsibilities.
Yeah, and I just, I've made a point with grant money a while ago, that with grant money comes stipulations that kind of dictate things like our curriculum, which then we go and spend, I mean, oh, but it's free money, but now our teachers are relearning how to teach their class every single year. Kids are, yeah. I don't like, I don't like grant money that much. I mean, I don't, I'm not totally against it, but I like to be careful with what grants we apply for because I don't like being told, like, the board is, one of our duties is to set a curriculum, and when's the last time that this board has set a curriculum? And even, like, where it wasn't dictated by the state because we accepted grant.
Jim Mazur, and, and I'm not gonna ask you because if you don't know off the top of your head, and I don't expect you to know, but one thing I'd like to see is, what do we, what do we get a year in grants right now? I mean, i- is it, is it a million dollars? Is it?
Yeah, so-
A hundred thousand dollars?
It would be, it would exceed a million, uh, title alone is, uh, close to that.
Title one and two?
Yeah.
Yeah, but-
By itself.
Well, but that's, is, is that, that's, that's not really a grant.
It's, it, it's, we keep track of it the same as a grant in our MEGs and-
Right, but that's, that's money that's provided by the federal government.
Yeah.
For particular topics.
Yeah.
It's not going anywhere.
No, it's not going anywhere, but we have to input information. We are monitoring the spending and-
That's the, that's the big reason for this is the compliance around grants has increased so significantly over the last seven, eight years. Districts everywhere across our state and other states have had to put in some person that is in charge of them, but, you know, you do that a number of different ways. Bringing somebody into this that can be dedicated to that and help the business office and the curriculum office make these reports, report to you how the money's being used, capture money that we haven't gotten because we're not able to go out and write the grant for that. That's the purpose of somebody like this, it just helps us make sure that the reporting is there, that the title one reporting alone is a bear, but you add in all the other stuff that they brought in with ESSR dollars and, and stuff through COVID, and Autumn's right to be wary of it because it is difficult to keep track of it all. Um, and you are tied to certain things, but a grant person can then help inform us, what are the loopholes, what are the strings attached, so that we know, you know, what we're getting into if we do apply for it, do we need to? But I think ultimately, it'll pay for itself, um, just at that price point, just in the grants they capture, and, and it will definitely pay it forward to the kids if, if we have somebody that can help, so.
Well, that's the thing, I think some of the kids struggle because their curriculum's changing every year, and teachers spend summers in trainings, learning how to pacify these grants, and I don't like that.
I don't, I don't disagree.
Oh, sorry, and I, also, oh, I forgot where, it's not your fault, I forgot where I was going along before that.
I could just agree with you on that. I, I've been frustrated with that as a, as an administrator, as a teacher, when strings are attached, it always makes it difficult, but that, you know, we have good curriculum here. I know there's problematic things we need to research and look at and, and whatnot, but Michelle does a phenomenal job of going out and seeing how can we use this money? Is this something that we're already doing that we can use that money for? Trying not to make it a new thing, um, new, new curriculum, new materials often brings some new ways of doing things, but a lot of times it's helping us with a new system that we're already kind of doing this, and it's just new, a little bit of new learning, so.
Yeah, but that system is, it stems from, not our community, not our, it, it stems from a state level, so what's the point of being in charge of curriculum? And also, I don't want to be reliant on this grant money. Um, Mr., what was his name, from Lewis and, yeah, stated something about how, well, your grant money didn't come in, so that number's not gonna look as bad until it does. So are we relying on grant money to pay for our kids' education? Like, and that's a problem I have.
That's a good point. Other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, we're, if we're successfully doing it now, what are, what are we, what are we gaining? What grants are we missing? I mean, and, and, and who's been doing the title one and two money for, you know, the last four or five decades? Well, I think it was in the seventies, correct?
I don't know which year it was, Ken, but I, I mentioned it's, it's, it's increased in the rigor and the need for tracking and reporting back because it's attached to strings. I think it was about four or five years ago, um, just before, it might have been six years ago, um, when Kevin came down to central office or a year or two after he was at central office, Kevin Claren. Um, when, you know, the state started attaching a lot, and, and I don't know if it was all ESSR dollars because of COVID or whatnot, but that's when they started saying, you know, you're gonna have to have a grants person. Um, that was kind of a, uh, I wouldn't say a state level push. Michelle, do you remember timeline on that by chance? But Kristi Moore started being our grants person in a position kind of like this.
Did she have a second job?
Along with her other, she was already working in the business office, and they added that to her, and then Kevin took it over, um, when, when Kristi left. But it was one of those things where it's a bear. It, it was getting into the, the, they call it the nexus system now, but I mean, there's gems, Mars, uh, what's the other? All these state level, federal level systems that don't talk together too well, and you've got to get all your data in by a certain time, and you've got oversight committees coming to look at you. And if you don't have your Ps and Qs right, especially like title one, you do lose the funding. So we gotta make sure we have it right. So you're right, somebody's been doing it, but at the detriment of other things, other capacities that they, they haven't been able to go work on because they're sitting there typing in all this stuff.
So we're trading the superintendent for this? Just saying.
Right?
It's not close, I'm just saying for a number of people at central office.
No, don't show, don't use his thirty grand. Don't even-
Why at a time? So in the, in this position, so basically we're, we're hiring a numbers person?
Yes.
Yeah, a, a numbers person who can think on their feet and assist with the capacity of other things too, but like, looking at the curriculum, suggesting things, but yeah, a numbers person.
Keep in check of the deadlines.
I, I, I-
Yeah, I can start it. I don't think it's quite there.
I don't, well, okay, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not grasping what you're wanting. Because we have curriculum people. I don't need another one, and I don't, I don't, but-
Hold on, what, you guys are discussing, I'll call Michelle and I'll go ahead and discuss it first.
We, we can justify anything right here, right now, okay? What I'm getting at, Al, is, is this person gonna keep data so we satisfy the government's questions? Or they going out and looking for more grants? Okay, well then, they don't, then they don't need, here's, here's what's gonna happen with this. We're gonna create another fifty to hundred thousand dollar job, and I, 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 I want to know what I'm paying someone that much money for if they're gonna come in and, and crunch numbers. That, that we already have people here to crunch numbers. We'll do it, do it. What, what are they actually going to do? They're gonna crunch numbers, they're gonna get grants, they're gonna work on curriculum, but what, what, what is their job?
How about, what if you just?
Yeah, somebody else like to comment?
I, I would.
Terry's got the floor.
I would, thank you. I, I think that we're missing, uh, this, uh, level of talent. Others who had this, um, responsibility that they had absorbed have left, is basically what's happened. And this person at fifty-five thousand dollars a year, if they find additional grants and or keep us compliant with what we currently have, or, you know, can expand, um, some of the dollars that we get for some existing grants, will more than pay for themselves.
But it's not a fifty-five thousand dollar a year job.
How do we know that?
Well, because you're gonna tack on a benefit package, and that's probably another twenty-five to thirty.
We're currently asking people whose salaries are much higher than this to backfill this job.
Here's my thing, why can't we just cut down on the number of grants?
I understand that, but what is, what is the, that's not what it's, that, that's like saying, that's like saying we're gonna hire a new superintendent at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We agree on that? That's not true, because you're gonna give the new superintendent a benefit package. And so he or she is gonna make well over a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Nobody in this building makes their salary. They, they cost, they cost more, so they're not gonna cost fifty-five thousand dollars, they're gonna cost fifty-five thousand dollars plus a benefit package. That, that's, that's kind of false advertisement.
So, to be completely open with everybody here and listening, these are hundreds of thousands of dollars, and Jim, you've mentioned over, over a million collectively that we get on an annual basis. And a grant writer can definitely be worth their salary when they know where to go to look. They will network with people to say what's out there, and they are consistent in writing the grants. Um, we won't, we won't even know how much value this person could bring to us. What we do know is we have people that are basically gumming it together right now and trying to keep us compliant, and we're probably missing some pretty significant opportunities.
The reason it's been successful over the last ten years is because you had Kevin and Michelle who don't sleep. They do this work at home, and, and it's a, that's the only way that's been successful. You have different people in there, we're gonna flounder on grants.
So they were doing that as building principals?
No, Kevin did it when he was here at central office and head of VLC.
Ken, Kevin had three jobs, didn't he? He had grants, he had VLC, and what else did he have?
Curriculum. Safety.
Safety, safety compliance.
Curriculum too. We- But curriculum suffered. Kevin's excellent, but curriculum suffered with all the attention it had to grants and safety and VLC.
Good.
I feel like-
She wants the floor.
Yeah, I feel like- What year did grants get big? Like, where it has escalated to this point, that we need to hire somebody specifically to apply for grants?
I would say over the last ten years. I remember when I was at Alms, there was only a few grants, and Bruce Fuller actually did title one. Uh, he got a stipend to do it, like five thousand dollars to be in charge of just the title one grant.
But I'm saying, when did it become, where that we're filling out fifty a year?
I, I think he said it was gradual.
Yes.
That's what he's saying on that over the years.
Well, I just would like to look to see if that gradual increase was the same, gradual decrease of our academics.
How about we do this?
The curriculum that they're putting all of the kids on is working.
But that's another side issue, right?
I know, but it's-
Side issue is, you're saying that some of the grants-
I'm saying we don't need to apply for as many grants because I don't feel like it's benefiting our district to accept this free money because, yeah, because it's, well, it's, there, nothing in life is free, there's always a cost.
Well, it's not all academics either, like, didn't we get some for the playground, like, some of the playground equipment that we just are putting in at stake? It's like playground equipment, so we didn't have to pay for that because there was, we found a, somebody, or I think Michelle or somebody found their grant, like food services. Yeah, like, we're decreasing our cost by having somebody that's applying for these grants. It's not always things that are gonna be creating more work or more burden on the teachers, there's all kinds of little things.
So you take fifty and you cut it down to ten, like, and only the ones that you truly need for, to update your equipment, your-
But if we have like little projects, like, we're not putting playground equipment in every year.
I'm just saying, right?
Well, I know, but I'm just saying that there, there'll be little projects where if we have a dedicated person, we can say, okay, we're gonna make major, like, we have, um, changes to the pack, like the AV stuff in the pack. Maybe if we had somebody that was dedicated that was networking with other people, they could say, oh, there's this arts grant that says that, you know, if you can show that you need it, they'll pay for half of your AV upgrades. I mean, we, and then we could use that money, that bond money to do something else. So it's not all just education requirements, there's all kinds of little stuff that I'm sure we could get.
Do you see what I'm saying? So now we're making the taxpayers pay a bond, but we're accepting all of this free money.
But then we can use the bond money for something else.
Yeah. Well, we can't really, because we have to follow stipulations for that too, but-
All right.
I just had, like, for more building.
Yeah.
One at a time, let's, let's, let's let this logical, yeah, I'm gonna get it up here in a minute. I'm just gonna ask a couple of quick questions, and hopefully they're, they make sense. Um, and Jim, you can report this back to the board, or Michelle can, maybe Michelle would be better, she's listening. I'll call you in just a minute, Michelle, okay? Still a board discussion. Um, how many grants have we lost? I would like to know that, okay? We can make an educated decision if we need one. So somebody's got to bear a report back, because this is a discussion item. Is that fair to everybody?
Yeah.
How many grants have we lost? Um, districts of like-sized population with our student count and employee count, how many of them have a grant writer? I think that's a legitimate question to ask, so the board can make an educated decision. Um, three, I'm not for or against it yet, but if a grant writer comes in, maintains our grant, and this is the way we did it at the police department, they had a, they had to pay for their position. So if they're so brilliant at writing grants, we always gave them one free year at the sheriff's office, and at some of the townships and candidates, you came from a big department to city. Whether it was a traffic grant, a narcotics grant, we would say, hey, listen, we're gonna write the grant, and usually that grant officer paid for itself in certain line items. So those are three questions I would like to answer before we beat this horse anymore, and then maybe bring it back at next meeting, and that would be fair for us, just to look at that.
No, yeah.
I'm not talking about grants, yeah.
No, I just, I would also ask-
That's just my perspective.
How many grants do we have right now that we're currently trying to maintain?
Right.
Like, number of grants and then how much amount?
How many we've lost?
We need to be careful with that topic, because I do not consider title one and title two, that's federal funding, that's not a grant, but we have to push paper because of it. So again, are we hiring someone to get grants, or are we hiring a paper pusher? And, and back to what Chuck said about grants, and, and I don't like comparing one place to another, but our department heads, our captains and lieutenants over certain bureaus were the ones that went and got the grants.
Yes.
We didn't have a grant writer. If your department had, it was your job to chase grants, whether it was for OWI task force, drug task force, whatever, your department had chased those grants. And then when he or she come back with them, they look like a hero, and if they didn't, they looked like they were late. Well, and that, and the chief would politely tell them that.
Yeah, let me add one other thing to that, that's a good thought, is that you said you paid a stipend, Jim. Maybe some of our department heads, you know, and it's not fair to maybe some of the people our salary that are working sixty or seventy hours a week versus forty or forty-five, that we could at least explore maybe a stipend for department heads that are actually writing grants, that would save us some of the benefits. But if we had seven department heads that were writing grants and successfully writing grants, I wouldn't be opposed to giving them extra money if the, like Ken said, that, and in our traffic, it's that happened, right? If the high school principal, middle school principal wrote a grant for their particular building, and they garnered this money, they're worth the five- they're worth the five or six or seven grand extra a year you pay them as a stipend. So they're not only a department head, but they're a plays eye, yeah, expert in their dis, in their section and they're writing a grant. So maybe we could look at those four things.
Yeah, but there's also gonna be, like, reporting requirements though, so if they don't fulfill the reporting obligations and they lose the grant, then we get the stipend back.
I, I've wrote grants and when you write a grant, the grant is tough at the beginning. Maintaining it is usually the easy part, is once you write it, Michelle shaking her head yes. You check the right boxes after the first year so you don't make a mistake and usually they're pretty good with you, or at least they did at the PD. And then they may change it a little bit, it's more dynamics at schools than it is in a municipality or township. But these are just options for the board to nod until next month, let's move on. Michelle, please come up for two or three minutes again. And then you can field questions from any of the board members.
Get out of my.
Yeah. No, no, Desi's leaving. No, you. Well, just give it three minutes, that way you only have three minutes. Please, somebody ask our curriculum director, uh, and let's go in order, Ken, you wanna start down at your end, sir?
I'm good, I'll listen.
Okay.
Okay, alright, go miss Michelle.
Okay. So, um, I absolutely can do grants. I can. Um, it is a lot, it takes up about fifty percent of my time. Just to stay on top of them all, I have to go to a lot of meetings, I have to watch a lot of webinars, go to conferences, it's a lot of detail. Um, the Title One grant alone, I've had to do modifications, it's gotten sent back to me like five times already to fix, um, small errors and things that I overlooked because I'm new. And, um, you know, once I get the hang of it, maybe hopefully it doesn't take up fifty percent of my time. This board has asked me to take charge of curriculum and instruction and improve student outcomes in our district. And in order to do that, I really need to be in the buildings and working with our building leaders and our teachers and, you know, um, moving, moving the district forward in that manner and I get paid the same either way. Um, I'm happy to continue to do what I do. Um, this was an opportunity to maybe get some support in the clerical aspects. There's a lot to put into the computer, there's a lot just to attend all the meetings and get all the notes and they change everything every year. For example, this year, Title One, they, um, because of what was going on with the federal government, they delayed it. And then they ruled it out differently than they've ever have before. So I couldn't even look back at Kevin Clarence's notes to be able to do the grant the way, you know, he used to do it. I couldn't just roll it over, um, the same way he did because they changed it. Um, and that, that's pretty typical. Um, Thirty-One A, at-risk monies, that's a grant. Um, um, all of our student success coordinators in our buildings, all of our SSPs that work with kids to help improve their academics. Um, all of our literacy coaches, um, I could go on and on, there's like so many employees that are Title or Thirty-One A funded, just those two grants alone. Um, employ so many of our people. And so it is a constant working with Jamie Cowan with, um, budgeting and with HR. If we need to hire a new person, we're, um, you know, it has to, the posting has to be done just right so that it aligns with the grant. So it's an interdepartmental position we're talking about that would be a lift for HR, it would be a lift for finance and it would be a lift for the curriculum department.
Who should that person work underneath? Should it be more you if you're doing the grants?
It could be me, yeah, and I could, and that would be great, because I honestly, I don't have a, a secretary, which I know, I don't mean to whine, but again, like, even as a building principal, I had someone who could help me answer phones and deal with email and mail. I went to my mailbox today and I had a stack like that, because, um, we get so many solicitations from all the people that wanna sell us stuff and, um, so I, I, I don't wanna go on and on, it's late, but that is the purpose behind this position. And if, and if you don't feel like the funding's there or that we shouldn't do that, that's fine. I'm just looking for a way to maximize, um, my ability.
Well, you brought up a strong point about curriculum, that's more important right now and maybe that we should get you out from underneath that, that lift. I'm not saying.
Apply for so many.
Well, I, I know that, but if there's free money out there, yeah.
But the Title and the Thirty-One A alone, I mean, that's just money that comes and we, I mean, we're not gonna turn away millions, I mean, we're talking, I, it may even be like, I wish Jamie was here, thirty million, I hate to even, but I'm talking like, it employs.
So we rely on it to run our district.
Correct, we would, we would lose all of our support folks.
But I'm just.
Coaches.
Thirty million? She meant three million, it's, it's not that much.
Well, our budget's only fifty million.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, see, I just threw out, I, I told you, I need Jamie here, this is why we have a strong finance director.
Thirty million is sixty percent of our budget.
Mm-hmm.
I'm pretty sure, well, we already know that Thirty-One AA money is only gonna generate about five hundred or less thousand dollars.
I thought it was.
Right, but I'm, I'm saying that that's generating that. But I mean, it's, it's not, it can't possibly be thirty million.
You're right.
Because if that's the case, we have a lot of money left over from the FTEs.
I was wrong, I was just taking a stab.
Any idea of the average, like, the, the littler ones, maybe ten, twenty thousand, hundred thousand?
Oh, I don't even, like, deal with ten or twenty thousand dollar grants. So, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Even if you did a twenty thousand dollar one and you did fifty, oh, let's take the big ones out, that's a million dollars, that's a million dollars in a year if they were only twenty thousand dollar grants.
Talk about the healthy.
Yeah.
Uh, so we get stuff with the grant money, now we can't support this stuff if we don't really apply for the grant or apply for a similar grant. Like, I don't know about this IXL, is that covered by grant money?
Hmm.
Yeah.
At-risk Thirty-One A.
Say, we don't get that grant next year or what have you and it comes time to update all these, these are on tablets, right?
Thirty-One A is, um, Thirty-One A and Title are based on our, um, free and reduced numbers, like our economically disadvantaged population. So, um, those, that, those monies are gonna continue to come to us.
I'm not talking about Thirty-One A, wait, so that's what covers the IXL program is Thirty-One A?
Mm-hmm. Not Thirty-One AA, which is the mental health.
No, I get that, I'm just saying this isn't coming from an ELA, Math, Science and Social Studies grant, this is coming from Thirty-One A?
Correct.
Let's stay on point with the actual position. You've answered our questions, Michelle.
Thank you.
I have two more questions.
Oh.
It says we have fifty grants, can you please provide to the board the fifty grants that we currently have or, if it's, I'm not gonna say fifty, but that's what they have on here, the, the amount of grants that we currently have.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Now.
And my question wasn't, Jim said he'd find it, the districts that are like size that have these, what was my other question, guys?
I have all your questions here, how many grants?
I've lost my memory.
Have we lost districts like size, uh, idea of stipends to directors or principals? Um, the number of grant writers, oh, that was the districts of like size, number of grant writers, can it pay for itself? The number of grants.
Yeah, and number of grants, that's all, thank you.
I will say that, um, some grants allow administrative costs. Um, they'll give an X percent, um, cap to, to pay towards administrative costs to manage the grant. Um, but some grants will not allow any kind of administrative costs to be part of the grant.
Would we be able to identify if we put a grant writer in for one year that if it was, it did help us and save grants and pay for itself? Would you be able to identify that without Jamie here to answer that?
I'll be honest and say I wouldn't hire a person based on the idea that they're gonna pay for themselves.
I'm just, I'm asking to cut our call.
Just to be honest.
Thank you, I appreciate that, appreciate that, that, Andrea, yeah.
But this isn't really a question for you, but, um, where did we come up with the salary from? Forty-five to, to, um, fifty?
That's a good question.
Forty-five to fifty-five, does it, does it have to be that high?
Well, if you're looking at qualifications, they want someone with a bachelor's degree, they want someone with a minimum of five years experience. If you look at what they're asking for, do you think you're gonna get somebody less than that amount? You're not.
I don't think you're gonna get some of that.
Yeah, our current, our current central office specialist, business office specialist, human resources specialist, that's the range that, that we're at, that's where that comes from.
Okay.
I think we're good, we gotta move on, Michelle, thank you so much for your information. Um, I have a couple of people down here asking for a break, uh, is there, we have a motion to take a five-minute recess?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, seconded, yep, alright.
Yep, seconded.
Five minutes, audience, please, thank you. It's actually better than midnight.
Because we had an hour and a half, we had an hour and forty minutes, uh, hearing.
Ten. I gotta go home.
Because we had an hour and a half, we had an hour and forty minutes, uh, hearing.
Ten.
Yeah, I, yeah. Well, not only that, I think we still would've been done by nine, if we didn't have that other meeting. And I have now on, that's all I'm saying, I'm most, after this next one. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order for anybody that's left, I see it's pretty thinned out. Um, we call back to order at nine forty-five, nine forty-six PM, and we left off at, um, uh, board action items. So the first thing is approval of the bus sale. You want me to just read them all, and we'll have discussion? Uh, approval of bus sale and purchase.
I'm moving by the buses.
I'm sorry.
Carrie. I'm just kidding. Carrie.
Carrie. Okay, so I'll, can I read it now, then we'll have a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody's right. Um, being resolved that the Swartz Creek Community School Board of Education approves purchasing three Thomas seventy-seven passenger buses from, I'll never pronounce it, Bukasra. All buses will now be equipped with undercarriage storage, the total cost for all three buses is four hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars, and no cents, to be funded by the Public Improvement Fund. Discussion? No discussion?
Nope.
We'll call a vote soon.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine?
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Jenny Walgas?
Yes.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Uh, next one, approval of high school bid awards.
This one? Yeah, this is the one that I had issues with.
Okay, and it's in this memo here, approval of high school renovation, here's all the breakdown of it.
That's what, I mean, I skimmed through it, I'm not gonna lie.
That's okay.
The last pages were they're withdrawing their bids, they did not have all the information necessary before submitting their bid. So how can you tell me that this was a fair bid? Yes. That's what I'm looking at. It says, after review, yeah.
Yes, on the back.
Yeah, and not just that one, but also the one with the green on the top, Sand Hill Glass. But, or maybe they, I don't know. I just not happy.
Unfortunately, I can't answer the question for you, Autumn, I'm sorry, I don't know if anybody else on the board can, or Mr. Kitchen, or Mr. Simonson.
It's, it doesn't really require an answer, I'm just letting the board know that I'm not too thrilled about how that was handled, and I'm probably not gonna go for it for that reason, because I want a fair bidding process, and I feel like, based on that information.
Chuck, if I may, in the past, when we've had a bidder who realizes that they had the wrong measurements, or the wrong materials that were going to be required to use, or that they were gonna run into some issues in the, the construction, they have had the opportunity to pull back their bid, because they don't wanna be, um, stuck, basically.
Yeah, they don't wanna be upside down.
Right, exactly.
Well, this one says a change in the spec, which tells me that we gave them wrong, wrong specs.
Or they did not have the accurate information.
Exactly.
Yeah, but, yeah, like for the very last one, it's the fantasy integration that is withdrawing, they were, there's only three listed there, and they were one of the three, so if they withdrew, there's not three.
Wait, come again?
Proposal eleven theater equipment, it's page thirteen. Yeah, I honestly, like, I don't really wanna approve this either, because, um, like, I was at the committee yesterday, and I asked, do we have this information? Jamie was like, you'll get it tomorrow. No, I, I want to have it ahead of time to review.
Yeah.
Not the same day that we're voting on it.
Exactly.
So I would say, let's, you know, give us some time to review the details, because she gave us the real quick overview with tiny little numbers, and she gave us the high-level numbers, but we definitely did not have an opportunity to go through this with any kind of, you know, at any detailed level, um, and I'm, I'm not comfortable being a, being just like a rubber stamp, I wanna look through things first, and we didn't have the opportunity to look through this in detail. That's what my two cents, though.
That's, that's
I mean, just for comparison, one of them that withdrew, um, I don't even know how to tell you what page, oh, page five of the report, they were forty-seven thousand, the other two were seventy-nine and ninety-eight, I mean, they were just, whatever they did, they were out of the ballpark.
How did we know that we were given, this one says the specs were di, like, they weren't even, they weren't given the correct specs, so my issue is, how do I trust that this was a fair bidding process if the people who quote, quoted the seventy-nine had different specs than the person who quoted the thirty-seven, or whatever he said?
They wouldn't have had different specs.
Oh, okay, because this says that they did.
I mean, this one says that they didn't include the railing, so they just might have missed it.
This one literally says there, this was caused by a change in the spec in, at amendment number two, that we were not aware of at the time of the bid.
Seems like they would be here complaining if we pulled, but
Seems like I'm complaining for them, then.
I mean, I can get the information for you.
It's, okay, I don't need it, I'm just, I'm not, that's what's gonna make my decision.
Yeah, it, there's two of them here, then, because there's the page five, that's also one where one of them that withdrew was one of the three, so we're, we've got two of these where there's only two bidders. That's what I just mentioned. Yeah. I'm looking for the other one. So, I mean
Not only that, but forgive me if I don't trust our bidding process based on the meeting that I watched back in April, or was it April, May, sorry?
I mean, it's only, we're at six bids on.
Well, it's, I'm not even worried about the bids, I, I was looking at the contingency and then the allowances, so that's twenty-four percent difference. Or twenty-two percent, let's see, four hundred and forty-six, or four hundred sixty-six, five, it's eight hundred thousand dollars. So the bid's four point three million dollars, we have eight hundred thousand dollars in variances. That, that's my only concern, and Jamie did provide this a little earlier, like Jenny said, it would be a little bit easier to digest.
Do we have to vote on it tonight?
Um.
I mean, the war is not starting till the summer, right?
Right.
I can't imagine.
I don't, I don't have a problem with just holding it off.
I will, leave this till the next meeting.
But I don't wanna vote on the same exact one, I got issues with this one.
Well, then maybe, as a suggestion, Autumn, you could call Jamie and ask her more details, because nobody here could answer that question. Because I didn't receive the document until today, Jenny did ask her for it yesterday, and she said that she would get it to her, or the board, it would be in the board packet. And I do feel like sometimes we rubber stamp.
I'll just spoil you that, what information.
Your board map.
Like, on behalf of all of us, like
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to table it, I don't wanna get off of parliamentary procedure here.
Also, yeah.
To table it for a month, it's been seconded by Jenny, is there any discussion on the motion? This is on the high school one only, right, currently?
Yes.
And you're saying as-is?
We're sealing it.
Okay.
Just tabling it so you can do some research, ask some questions.
That's fine.
To satisfy your needs. Is there any more discussion? Uh, I don't know if we need a roll call vote on this, too, I think we just say, yay, you're next, we're not spending any money. So all in favor?
Yes.
Yay.
All opposed? A's have it. So this is tabled to next month, please do your due diligence to look into it, if you have any questions, please call Ms. Cohen, or Jim, we'll get the information to you. Is that fair, Jim? I, I know I'm putting a lot of stuff on you guys, but, all right. Um, next one is, oh, this is probably gonna be the same thing, approval of middle school bid awards.
Table, motion to table.
Second.
There's a motion to table this, and a second to table it to when?
Next month.
Okay, so your motion is, uh, to table this the next month? It's been seconded by, by Jenny? Discussion on the motion.
Jim, do these bids expire at a certain point?
That's a great question, Carrie, I don't see it on there.
I, I don't know exactly what it is, but yeah, I believe they would expire. Uh, the concern I have is now we're gonna be doing elementary configuration, and we're bumping back construction for a month, but just
Are we starting any of these projects now?
Um, well, they're wanting to get in over Christmas break to do some things, like with the basketball hoops at the middle school, but
If this information was provided like Jenny said before, we wouldn't have to table it now.
Or we could
We would've had time to look it over.
And the cover sheet says that work scheduled to commence June fifteenth, so twenty-sixth, that's what the cover sheet says, it doesn't say anything about over Christmas break. The cover sheet says work is scheduled to commence on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-sixth.
We just spoke with them today, and there were some things they were hoping to do over Christmas break, but that's, it's okay.
I just wanna point out, the one person that pulled out, and this bidding process did say their estimating was an error on their end.
I'm not saying that there's not, I'm just saying
Because sometimes the public needs to hear these things, too, like, there was one person that pulled out here, but they did it because they admitted it, which I appreciate, right, because they estimated it wrong on their end.
Fine, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
All in favor? Motion's been made, seconded.
No.
All opposed? No, we're nailing it.
Nays.
We have one nay, and rest are ayes. Okay, next one. Yes. Okay, you prefer doing that, that's no problem, okay, roll call, vote soon.
Uh, Ken Engel?
Yes.
Jenny Walgas?
So this is to, to table it?
Table approval of middle school.
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine?
No.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, it's tabled to next month. Please do your due diligence, and if you have questions, please get with Jamie or Jim, uh, so we can resolve this issue, and I don't have any issues with it myself, I'll probably look at some other things. Uh, D, approval of the IXL for the high, for the high school.
So moved, okay.
There's, okay, hold on, yeah, we're gonna do discussion, we're just, we're gonna follow parliamentary procedure now.
Okay.
Carrie made the motion to approve IXL for the high school, and I believe Ken seconded it, now we can have discussion on the motion.
Okay. This is for tablets? Michelle?
Yeah.
The software, sorry, software for ta, for computers, so they're not, okay. I guess I could've just leaned
It is a computer program, it can be used on tablets, phones, regular computers.
Okay.
Chromebooks.
Okay, so I, and I have an issue with this. And it's just about books, and not, and the lack thereof in schools. Like, I feel like, um, it's, well, I wrote down some things, I think, but, um, yeah, I don't like learning off of iPads, I think kids are on their phones enough, I think that books cost, I mean, the cost of books, we spend one time, and the book's good for years, I mean, mind you, we would have to probably replace them, they do get kinda beat up. But it's not updating new software every, how often do we update software, or install new gadgets on?
This one's web-based, so it, we don't do anything, they don't update on their side.
Okay, but it's only good for two and a half years?
It's an annual subscription that you're paying for, you're correct. This is not to replace any kind of textbooks, um, that's coming, I mean, I, I remember coming with my hands out a lot, because we have a lot of curriculum needs and, uh, textbook needs, things that need to be looked at. Um, IXL is a, uh, a supplementary program, and it's to help fill in the gaps, a lot of these high school kids still have a lot of gaps in their learning, um, and this quickly will assess, and then help teach them and fill in those gaps.
What do teachers do, then? Don't, don't get mad about that, because I don't mean it in like a demeaning way, by, by any means, but
Oh, well, teachers are teaching the, teachers are teaching the curriculum, but if, if a child's coming into, let's say, Algebra One
But wouldn't the teacher know best what, what, and I think we've had this conversation before, where the breakdown is, and where that the curriculum isn't, uh, clicking with the student, perhaps?
Right, high school teachers have like a hundred and fifty kids in a day.
Yeah.
And to individually assess each one of them, it, the software is that Lyft to say where the gaps are, and how can we best fill them?
Yeah, I'm not saying that they need to assess a hundred and fifty kids, I'm just saying the kids who might be struggling, and that's where the hands-on teaching, I feel like, is more beneficial, because you know your student, like, versus, here's your tablet, complete.
This is also something they can do outside of school.
Yeah.
You know, at home, parents can use this.
Yeah.
That sort of thing with kids to help them, um, it's just a, it is a supplement, it's not to take the place of the teacher in the classroom giving good instruction, using textbooks, all of those things, so.
Well, and this fills gaps, too, so, like, if, the, the students have to go through and take like a pre-test, and then they get extra assignments or questions strictly for the things that they got wrong, and there's videos, so they can click on a little bit, I'm just saying, yeah, so, so i, if they, like, they were sick for a day, so they missed, you know, Factors Day in math class, you know, they're not, the teacher can't necessarily keep track of who was gone on what day. You know, they can go back through, they can take the test and be like, okay, yeah, you don't have any idea what you're doing with this one, so here, here's a video, here's some practice question.
But do you see what? Is it required that they do it, it, are they graded on doing this gap work, or this makeup work, or, I don't know what it's the technical term for it is, but are they graded on it? Because not all kids would need it, right, so you couldn't, uh, assign a grade to it, so
Extra.
This would be intervention, I, that would be up to the individual teachers, how they integrate this into their classrooms, and, um,
So it
We shouldn't be doing that, it should be, it should be status quo. If, if they're gonna do, I, I give you the example, is this following the curriculum as, as they're doing in the classroom?
It is the, um, it is, and it adjusts, so if they need to go back into, like, let's say, seventh, eighth grade math to fill gaps, it will adjust, so it, it cannot, it has everything from pre-kindergarten all the way So it, it cannot, it has everything from pre-kindergarten all the way up to advanced above twelfth grade. So kids can learn at their own level.
Okay, so I, I give you the example of my child reading too, and I don't know if we're talking about the same thing, but it sounds similar. Just hypothetically, she was dividing and multiplying fractions in class.
Mm-hmm.
They did this stuff that was called Moby Math. Don't ask me the name of it. When she got home and did Moby Math for twenty minutes every night because it was part of, was part of the curriculum and then they had to show, it showed the twenty minutes you spent, they would do decimal points. Well, that's a problem to me and I'm not the smartest guy with math, but I'm pretty good with it. You can't teach two math curriculums in the same day.
Yeah.
And so that was, that was one of the issues and, and me and the math teacher went round and round. I basically told her her program was the stupidest stuff I ever seen in my life. Because you can't do fractions in the classroom in decimal points that night for twenty minutes. I mean, you can, but whatever you're doing in the classroom should be reinforced at night. So I guess that's what I'm asking here. Are we filling in a gap? Are we filling the gap of the curriculum that day that the kid's going to be tested on that Friday?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so we're going to be teaching two curriculums to a kid that's already struggling with math?
Well, they would be using the one to fill in the back skills they needed to be successful in whatever course they were in, in high school.
So let me put my spin on it this way. While you're in school today, I'm going to teach you Spanish. When you go home tonight, I'm going to put you on a program to teach you German. Are you going to be successful at either one?
Michelle, isn't this?
That's, that's, you, you can't teach two curriculums in the same day.
But if there's fundamentals for what you're learning during the day, but, but no, what she's saying is, is there stuff that they, like, let's say they missed subtraction day. And now all of a sudden you're trying to add subtract, um, fractions. Well, if they are still not mastering subtraction, you're definitely not going to master subtracting fractions.
Correct.
Yeah, so this is more about addressing the fact that you're struggling with subtraction with whole numbers. Let's get you up to speed with that so that when we're talking about subtracting fractions in the classroom, you have some concept of what's going on instead of just being totally lost, but, and falling further behind.
Here, here's the other side of this theory is, is the teacher doesn't make it where they have to do it, then what good does it do to have it?
So.
There's, there's got to be some kind of follow-up and something that follows what you're doing.
So the reason the high school didn't, um, get IXL last year, when we bought it for the rest of the district, was the high school, um, staff were not convinced that it would be useful or that it would, they would use it enough to justify the cost. And so we didn't move forward. They've since seen the success with the rest of the district using it. And they've investigated it and had more time and IXL continues to develop more high school level courses because it started out as more of an elementary, excuse me, program. And, um, they are very quickly moving in to create courses. Um, now they have math ELA, they have a bunch of, um, science and social studies. Now, does it have every single course? You know, no, not yet. Um, but they're heading that way. So what I'm going to say is I trust our teachers to be professionals and to use the tools. I mean, yes, we have guidance and we have guidelines and we, we supervise what they do and there are parameters. So before, that was one of my big questions to the high school principal. And the, um, high school instructional coach was, um, can, have you had enough discussions with your department heads and with your teachers to assure me that they're going to implement this, that they see the need for this? And they said, yes. So I have to trust the professionals. I, I can't get in and, and teach their classroom for them. Um, and if we find there is an issue with someone.
Hold on, she's talking. Just, just hold on. Just let her explain.
So, you know, I, I, I guess you're asking what-if questions or questions about individual teachers and their use of it. And I can't, can't really speak to all that.
Can I ask a question? Isn't this the presentation you gave us at the last committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that, I don't know about the teaching two things at once, but this had a, if I'm correct, it had an, an area where you could go to and, like, if you're having specific trouble with something, there were samples. You could, you could ask for samples so you could practice this.
And videos.
And I thought, I thought it was, it sounded like a good program.
Mm-hmm. Our special educators in particular and our, our interventionists at the high school especially see the need for this. Teachers with, um, the lower, um, achieving students that have these gaps to fill in, um, see the need for it. But even our more advanced students, there's, um, SAT and ACT prep built in. So if they want to try to get a higher score or go for scholarships or whatever, they can use this on their own. It's, it's a value added for our families and for our students, for the parents. Mm-hmm. Correct.
I have one more question. What else can this grant be used for? That's my last question on it.
The at-risk grant, it pays, like I said earlier, when we were talking about grants, um, it's a big pot of money. It pays for, um, our coaches, it pays for interventionists. It pays for, this would be intervention materials for interventionists and teachers to use. Um, it pays, um, oh.
If it's easier to just send me the list of.
Yeah.
Then I'm good with that.
It's part of the whole grant conversation anyway, so I'll include that with the grant information and everything that thirty-one A pays for and all the dollars there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michelle.
Can I, I think it's notable to mention again that the high school staff asked for this.
Right.
I, I don't know that we get a lot of that information coming to us. So the fact that they've seen the value across the district and want to do this, and I know it's integrated with NWEA assessments so that they can personalize the questions for students. I didn't talk about that, but, and that's, that is remarkable. Now we're using another tool to help improve or give different options, not only to the teachers, but to the families and to the kids.
Well, how do you measure the success if it's not tracked or required or what have you?
Well, the score, if we see the scores increase.
And we, but we can trace it back and say, this is what.
It, it's, it's a tool. She's explaining this. We should not be having this. It's a yes or no. Let's, let's, um, point of order, let's move this on.
And move.
And, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll call the question.
I support.
Yep. I'm sorry. Uh, Andrea.
And Carrie.
Made a motion for approval.
I support.
Carrie supported. We already had our discussion. Uh, let's have a roll call vote on it. Sue, oh, I'm sorry. Being resolved at the Swartz Creek Community School Board of Education approves the quote for IXL subscriptions and training for sixty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and zero cents to be paid over three fiscal years. Our allocated section thirty-one A grant funds will cover the purchase. Sue, roll call vote, please.
Ken Engel.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Uh, Autumn Henry.
No.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey.
Yes.
Jenny Walgast.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next one, approval of Little Dragons Learning Center purchase agreement. We talked about this earlier. Um, there's a packet in there with the purchase agreement. There's also a small packet in there with the attorney's recommendation. And, uh, we've already talked about the price, uh, so. So move. So move. Moved by Ken Engel. Motion made by Ken.
I'll second.
Second by Jenny Walgast. Any discussion?
Has the survey already been done?
No.
And the seller's paying for the survey, right?
No. We are.
We are?
I thought there was just a survey. That's how we determined it wasn't ours. Or we, we, something. We crossed the line.
I'm just saying it's not normal that the buyer would do the survey, but if that's what we agree to, what do we agree to?
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Oh, they split the cost of the survey, it says.
In the, uh, agreement. It doesn't say that in the motion.
Seller may want the dis, oh, wait, what? Oh, okay, sorry. I'm reading too far into it.
Approval of Little Dragons Learning Center purchase agreement. Being resolved at the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the purchase of the extra parking lot that is attached, the parking lot attached to Little Dragons Learning Center, part of taxural five-eight-dash-three-six-dash-three-zero-zero-dash-zero-two-three. Hesitate. Did I put an extra zero there by mistake? Am I good?
Yeah, it's reading down.
Okay. For the amount of five thousand dollars plus survey and legal fees. Roll call votes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey.
Yes.
Jenny Walgast.
Yes.
Ken Engel.
Yes. Motion passes. Next one. F, approval of the second read and approval of policy three-two-oh-nine, green policy update from October tenth, twenty-twenty-five. So move.
Support.
Wait, I got a question because one of, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's all right. Do it the right way. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Who, who made the motion? Mr. Engel made the motion. Carrie, were you seconded?
Yes.
It's been seconded. Discussion on the motion.
Can I discuss something real quick?
Mm-hmm.
Um, just, I got some dates wrong on the ESTA stuff. Um, and so in your packet there, uh, for the Oc- the October tenth update, I apologize, this was on your first read too. I, I flipped it around and I missed it in my notes, so this is my fault and I just saw it today. Um, I had told you, the board, that, uh, that we were looking at January first to December thirty-first to be the dates for, um, if, I'm on, uh, I'm on the page here that has, uh, four-one-one-three, four-one-one-three, F-one. Yeah. The dates there were January one to December thirty-first. Looking back on my notes, our original discussion on that, I had actually said July one to June thirtieth because it matches up with the school year and it matches up with the accruals that we do for the rest of our staff right now. So that was my fault, my mistake. So if we could, when we vote on the approval, if you could write July one to June thirtieth rather than January one to December thirty-first, that was my mistake when I passed it along to Sue.
Okay, where, where are we at here? Is that in there?
Four-one-one-three and four-one-one-three, F-one, the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So those two middle items there both have those date ranges in there. That's just saying we're going to update the accruals for staff members for ESTA, you know, at the, at, with, with that year as the mark.
Does this have to be voted on today or can we wait till next month and correct it?
It can wait. Okay.
Wait.
Will you withdraw your motion?
Sure, I don't care.
And just have it corrected so we don't have to make a big confusion of it? Okay.
This, we're not even voting on these two tonight, right?
This is the second read.
This one says, wait, what? Thirty-two-oh-nine.
Yep. And policy up. It, it doesn't matter, Autumn. We got a motion. That's fine. We have somebody has a motion.
I'll correct it and get it back to you. Sorry about that.
And then, uh, and I, my assumption is that he will correct it also. We won't have any confusion next month. And we're not underneath any timeline. Sorry, Susan. Sue.
Withdraw the, uh.
Well, it's been withdrawn. The original motion's been withdrawn.
Okay.
Withdraw it.
Why isn't the policy number on that one?
Wait a second.
You, you're going to ask that, so we're going to get that squared away for next month.
Okay. Oh, it wants me to, all this stuff.
If a motion's withdrawn.
Yeah, I didn't.
I don't think we have to have a second port from the original.
No.
Yeah.
Move on.
Yep, we'll move on.
Yeah. I'm having my, I'm in my own world.
No, you're okay. You're all right. That's okay. I just made it easy so we can do it next month. You can correct the date, so there's no confusion. G, approval of denial of thirty-one A-A resolution, uh, I'm sorry, approval or denial of the thirty-one A-A resolution. Um, I'll open that up to the floor for a motion if so chosen. Okay. Been moved by, I'm sorry, motion by Andrea Fick, supported by, uh, Ken Engel.
What do we, what's the motion to approve or to deny it?
Which one do you want? A, B, or C?
Well, that's one, I, I.
I'm sorry. Which one do you want?
We have to move forward with it.
No, no, there's four options.
Four?
Four.
Three.
There's three.
Three?
A, B, and C.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw D.
Yeah. I, I move that we approve. Okay, let me.
And the language is in here, A, B, C. They gave us a little document where we can do it. I don't know where I came from.
Define opt-in, resolution opt-in, yeah.
Discussion.
Um, so we kind of talked about this, um, yesterday, um, that there is current litigation at the state and federal level. For sure, the deadline has been changed from November thirtieth to December fourth. There's a potential analysis with the state case. There's a federal case. Um, I didn't hear any updates. They were supposed to have some initial meetings today. Um, so I don't know if anything's going to come out of that. But one of the things that we talked about was, um, even if we approve this, that Michelle or whoever actually clicks the button and submits it won't do that until the very last minute. So I just want to make sure that that's, we, we communicate that as well, that our intention is that that if we do approve this, that it is not submitted until absolutely positively necessary. Just in case.
Business day before December.
Right. In case anything changes.
Well, December fourth is a business day, so I would just wait until that afternoon.
Practice for New Year's Eve.
Okay, any more discussion on it?
Yeah, I'm not saying it's a little bit.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Wait a minute, do I have to, do I have to read the A, B, or C?
Make sure you get approval.
A.
That's what the motion.
And A is where in my packet?
Right, here, you can rekind. Wait.
Okay, so I'm going to add that key onto there because it has A, B, C here with none of the actual language. Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Being resolved at the Swartz Creek Community School Board of Education approves Resolution A, accepts the thirty-one A-A funding conditions authorized the superintendent to complete the opt-in process once MDA releases its required form. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call votes.
Who moved and supported it?
Me and then Ken.
Okay.
You want me to read it again?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Ken Engel.
Yes.
Jenny Walgast.
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, public comments. This can be non-specific.
Sorry, I just want to go home and go to bed.
I'm sorry it took so long. We had a lot of bite.
Yeah, I'm, I'm tired. This is like my fifth board meeting today, so I, I, you guys have killed me. So I just have a couple of quick questions, um, or, um, not questions, and you can answer them after or you can talk about it, whatever you want to do. But the Mary Crepo plaque was brought up and, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I did attend Mary Crepo, so I do know this. Um, there, on the outside of the building, at the old Mary Crepo building, on the, this side of the door, if you were looking at the building from the front, there was a, a copper or a bronze plaque that used to be on the actual side of the wall. Do, do we know where that plaque went?
I don't.
I don't, but I, we can track it down.
I, I just thought, because you had mentioned about getting a plaque and it seems kind of fitting that the Mary Crepo plaque could possibly be used for that. Um, and then I wanted to, uh, to go over, um, I, thank you very much for going back to the K through five. Um, a lot of community members, a lot of residents were concerned about that. Um, I just want to state right now as it sits, you are not in compliance with your own board regulations and your own board rules by not having the bussing correctly done right now as you sit. So even though you're taking the corrective action for it to take place in twenty-twenty-six, as it sits right now, you are over the actual legal limit for the distance from the place of residence that would have to be picked up from and taken to the actual school location where they're actually attending school. So legitimately, the school board is causing parents to send kids to one school and drive kids to another school or, or the buses are taking them back and forth, but they're still walking from their front doors to Morris Elementary and then having to wait, even if it's a five-minute wait. These are little kids, probably my size, and I get super cold within five minutes. And I get super cold within five minutes. So I, as it gets colder out, I, I think that needs to be brought to your attention that you're not in compliance with your own school policy right now as you sit. Um, another thing I wanted to mention was the, uh, action. Yep, the action taken from the JV varsity ball. I hope that the school board takes that into consideration for that young man. Um, I think it's a shame that he was ousted from the team, but yet you've got somebody sitting on the team that can't even play. And then, uh, the grant writer, uh, two things. First of all, I understand why your finance administrator, who is paid for a full-time job, is not your compliance, um, administrator on your grants, keeping track of your grants and, and doing the paperwork on that once the grants is submitted. And, um, on another question, the grant writer, if you can pay him fifty-five thousand dollars to come in and write grants free, that's a heck of a deal. Um, I, I, I can't say any way or other shape or form, but that's actually a heck of a deal. But it should be, um, it shouldn't be a full-time job and it shouldn't be a job that requires them to be here at the school. Most grant writers work from home and most grant writers do other school districts and other communities. So I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Any more public comment? On being? Okay.
Can I?
Everybody's tired.
Can I ask a quick question regarding this, um, Resolution A? It has a spot in this for, um, the board desires to authorize and direct blank superintendent of schools or designate. You guys mentioned Michelle.
Yeah, she was.
What's her name written in there?
She wasn't in the original resolution though, so I don't know if we can do that now.
It's.
Oh, okay. Okay.
You want Jim's name in there? Okay.
Yeah, Ken does.
All right. Thank you.
That's the way it reads, thank you. Okay, uh, board comment, we'll, uh, move down the road here, uh, Mr. Engel.
I have two. Um, I, I do think from the gentleman for the basketball and then, uh, Tony Alchuk, we both know him.
Right.
Ryan.
Ryan, yes. I, I think, uh, we might need to revisit how, how the coaches are, are rehired. Um, a couple of years ago, the same basketball coach and son of a player walked off the court. I'm, I'm not gonna say that athletic director is ignoring things, but the board is in, the board is the group that hires. And when you renew these kind, these agreements or contracts with coaches each year, no one is looking at that as the athletic director. And I know from the last one, that was one of my pet views, the last athletic director come to a board meeting and I tell how she did all her evaluations and everything else. My son played hot, I went to every game, he attended every practice. She never came to one practice and didn't evaluation. And she never went to one role game, she went to the ones that on my own road. I'm not saying Adrian's doing that right now, but what I am seeing is, I, I don't know who's watching that. And, and, and I know the previous, I, I know what the previous one did, cause I was not a fan and I watched like a hawk. And doing her job was not one of her specialties. Um, especially for the evaluation of coaches. So if the parents are not getting questionnaires and sending them back and, and, you know, they think I need that, maybe, maybe the boards, maybe the board needs to start seeing these, um, things that are filled out by the parents, because we're just, I, I find it very disturbing. I heard him, I was, I flash back to when seven kids walked off the court. I'm not saying the coach was wrong, I don't even know why they walked off the court. That's a problem. That, that, that is a serious problem. And another thing is, is do you have to try out? If you have to try out and you're injured, you can't try out, I'm making a team. I mean, we, we, those are two very kind of different statements. You know, if, if, if you were injured in season, I get it, but if you had to try out and you got cut, but you're injured and you don't have to try out, but you make a team, that doesn't make a lot of sense. I'm not saying I want the other child off the team, I'm not even saying I want the other one off the team. What I am saying is what we're doing is making sense. I always come back to it as a pass the smell test, that does pass the smell test. That's a very kind of different. So, you know, maybe one goes home or one comes back, or maybe we revisit the basketball, I don't know who it is. But there's some issues there. This topic real quick, I had a conversation the other day with Ms. Tippens. Uh, she gave permission to use her names, right? She was here earlier. Um, she's a little upset with the information she's not receiving from the district. And I told her I have to bring this up to the board, I don't know what she's asking for and I haven't, I totally understand her, couldn't get kids' names out, all that. But if she's asking for reports, that can give you. We, we have, we have a lady that's upset. And one of the things that upset her, and this is not anything against Derek, but she kinda felt like she got shortchanged because everybody that spoke to her on the day of the event and shortly afterwards has now disappeared. And she is being forced to talk to someone who was not part of it. And, and it's not that he can't be brought up to speed and read reports and all that kinda stuff, but why would the building personally handle that? And I, I, I don't understand, the fight was in her building. She should be communicating with this parent.
Yes.
And, and I, I'm not gonna blow our business out here. She's hot. She's very angry. And, and she should be. Um, you know, she, she got told she couldn't ride the ambulance for the child. I don't know if that's possible. We might have been picking a fight. No, it's not.
Yeah, right.
But, but again.
The situation was escalated.
One of our employees broke the ambulance and moved the parent.
Yeah.
So, you know, you're, you're kicking the ambulance. Yeah, I'm kicking you out, I'm gonna throw Joe Blow in the ambulance. Again, it goes back to what I said about the kids not, those were your children, you want answers?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm pretty sure none, none of the people at this table would go, uh, oh yeah, you know, Mr. So-and-so or Mrs. So-and-so can ride with him. I don't get, I don't care about that kid.
That's what I told her.
Yeah, I mean, look, a- again, again, I come back to this, it's a pass the smell test. That didn't pass the smell test. I explained to her where she can go about that problem, it's not here, it's down, uh, Cher's party.
There's, there, there are details with that situation that prevented us from being able to reach, okay?
What?
Significant detail, I can't talk about it here, but significant detail.
Well, she, she talked to me about it, she said she was very upset and, and that was what prevented it, but again,
Okay.
Go, go get treatment for your kid. Who, who can be okay to treat the child? I don't care how upset she was. Uh, not when they're there. That, that form's not super secure while they're at the center. But she was there. She was, she was told she couldn't get the ambulance. So she was there. We don't have an rule up here.
And she wasn't told by us she couldn't get the ambulance.
No, she wasn't, I told her to go to the nurse.
And I spoke with her tonight also, I've been in communication with her.
I can't interrupt you either, Jim.
Special situation.
Get real.
I can.
Yes.
No, this is board comment, we're done. This is our summary for the night.
And she feel like now that she's being ignored and her kid was assaulted, her kid was not unconscious. Um, like I said, she had a lot to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull some of it back. And I told her where to go about the ambulance, I told her that, you know, we didn't have, but again, you know, again, I, I, I challenge all the parents here, being told you can't get the ambulance and then a school official riding. You know, I, I, that, that was not, that was not good. That's it.
Thank you for your comments, Kim. Kim. Jenny, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I will say that, um, I definitely had experience with a child in the sports and getting the, the feedback at the end of the, the feedback form at the end of the season, completing it with a lot of issues and that I would have liked to have heard, um, a response from the athletic director or anybody in the athletic office and never heard a, a peep from them. Um, I was ready to come here and talk to somebody in the athletic department and my child begged me not to, which is the only reason why I didn't blow up at the time, but I, I'm with Ken, I wanna see those survey results. So if there's a way that, um, whoever's gathering that data, um, can make sure that that's being shared in the interest of transparency so that we're aware of the issues that the parents are, are bringing up. I mean, why are we asking them to fill out the survey if we're not doing anything with the data?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I definitely support that as well.
Thank you, Jenny. Kim?
Um, well, Ken said a lot of what I, I read those emails too and I, I'm kinda wondering, I would like, I li- I guess I'd like an explanation of why this kid, cause it appears that they have to try out. So I was wondering, how can we put a kid on a team that can't even participate for weeks? But then, I mean, then we cut somebody else. It makes no sense to me, I'd like to hear an explanation for that from somebody. Um, I mean, to me, I, I don't even know this, but to me, that looks like playing favorites or something. Because how can a kid that's got these injuries, um, try out for something? And yet they had another kid that tried out, doesn't make it. But, um, the other thing, um, yeah, about the lady, I, what was it, Tippin? I was disturbed too by the fact that she was having to go to somebody who had no knowledge of this event. And the way I've always understood it, um, you should go down the chain of command, which it looks like that she did that, but why is it being turned over to somebody that had nothing to do with it to begin with? And now that all that has to be explained to her now? So I, I'm just saying, you know, I disagree, I don't like the way things were done on either one of those things, but I would definitely would like to see those surveys too and I, I think something should be done for this kid that, or, I mean, I guess I'd wanna hear a good explanation of why there was an extra spot on that team and that child did not get it.
Thank you, Kim. Carrie?
I wanna end on a positive note, cause I think we need that. I wanna thank Mandy Cummins from the high school, the, uh, support staff there for writing the grants that resulted in two AEDs being given to the district recently. Um, those are very valuable. Uh, one is going to be portable and will be taken on the road with certain teams. And the other one was just given to us at the Mary Crepo Park. I just wanna thank the folks that donated them to the district. And I also wanna thank Mandy for taking the time to write the grant that resulted in those, um, being available. They're critical, um, for the safety of all of our folks, um, athletes, other folks. And, um, I just wanted to thank her publicly, cause I think it's wonderful.
Uh, one question, Carrie. Who donated them?
Um, one came from London Strong, which is a foundation, and they lost their daughter.
Grandline, yes.
And, um, they gave us one, it's a, it's a very sophisticated one. Um, and that will travel with teams that travel. Uh, and then the other one came from Metro Ambulance, I believe, from one of our alums, um, who's, uh,
What was the name of the ambulance company, I'm sorry?
Metro, is it Metro Ambulance? But MedStar, MedStar, possibly, thank you, thanks, thank you. Um, MedStar and the, the gentleman, um, who was there to present it and I believe is the president of the ambulance company is a, uh, Schwartz Creek alum.
Thank you.
So just wanted to shout out to Mandy, um, for taking that time, it could have saved a life.
Uh, quick, quick question on that before I go to Andrea, so Sue, would you draft a short letter or have Jim do it?
Or what?
To those two companies thanking them?
Absolutely, it's on.
And then I'd like to sign it along with the rest of the board, Jim.
We have, uh,
As a thank you for that.
That's something that we do for everyone that.
Okay, you already did it? Okay, good.
Well, it hasn't been done yet, but it will be.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Andrea.
Okay, so I just have a couple of things, of some comments that were made by board members that, um, were a little bit odd. Um, one was the new construction committee meeting on October twenty second. Was that a mandatory meeting, Chuck? It wasn't, because none of our main meetings are mandatory.
I don't think it was, that's a, that's a board.
It wasn't.
Open thing.
None of our meetings are mandatory, but when I was a few minutes late, you called me out in front of the public and said, oh, isn't this a mandatory meeting? Which is just a little undermining, especially since two people in the public pointed out to me that you said that, knowing that no meetings are mandatory. So, that's a little disturbing that you.
I don't understand that.
But she did, it's me in the meeting. And then the special meeting on November fifth, I wasn't here and I made it very clear to a board member that I wouldn't be here under no circumstance that I'd be there. Um, I spent that week attending a murder trial for my friend's son who was stabbed fourteen times. Two of those stab wounds were in the back. And some of them were up to six inches deep. And I get there might be people up here that don't, that are desensitized to that, but it was a very emotional week for me. Um, and I made it very clear that I would not be here because of that and that's fine, you guys chose to have the meeting, but one comment that was made to me when I said, why, why Wednesday, why are we doing it? In two days, we could do it next week. Comment was made that, well, we just do Wednesdays, but yet Ken and I called a meeting for Morris Elementary on a Monday, August eleventh, I believe the date was. Um, so no problem calling that, so it was very, felt very intentional that you went ahead and did it anyways, knowing I couldn't be here, there was no way mentally that I was gonna put an extra thing on my plate that week. But then the fact the comment was made, that I said I might make it or not make it, it was kinda left open-ended, that I just blew it off, kind of. Um, was quite offensive and quite offensive to my son when he, when I played him that part of the video, because he was in the car with me when I had the conversation with the board member. And I said I absolutely would not be in an emotional position to be here that day. And their comment back was first, well, you could probably make it, court gets over at four thirty-five o'clock. No, well, that's when I probably reiterate the emotional. I just wouldn't be emotionally invested in a meeting that night. And their comment back was, well, you might come back feisty. I'd come back something. I will tell you, my son was irate when he listened to that meeting, because he was with me, he went, he chose to miss his college classes that day because he knows my friend, he knows her son. And he vested that date going with me to the jury selection, it wasn't wanting to be in the first day, but he was very, very upset at the miscontext of the conversation being repeated here of why I wasn't here. So I just think we need to be better. Um, honestly, I wasn't, I thought about it when I heard about it, I'm just, that whole thing is tragic, but we need to be better with each other. I mean, there's no reason we gotta throw out little snarky comments about people being not at meetings that are mandatory, when it's not true. But we're un- that's undermining, right? It's undermining comments about people and it's not gonna help us be productive. When the public sees it and they point these things out to me before I even get to watch the meetings, that tells you what the public thinks about you, cause they know what you're saying isn't true and it's undermining. So we need to be better. And, you know, for the public out there that I get, honestly get entertained, um, for the public member out there that wants to, I love it, like, listen, you can say nothing about my last name that offends me and, um, I'm just telling you, all this lady calls me the thick queen and I, it's entertainment. You are not gonna infatiate me with anything you say about my name. Um, if anything, it's just new material that I might not have heard, but most of it's old news, so, um, just throwing that out there too, that there's not a lot that really gets to me deep down inside, but, um, as a board, we need to be better and stop undermining each other at the board meetings.
Thank you, Andrea. Ms. Autumn?
Yes. So I have a few. The email from the parent that's been referenced. Um, I need to see that she gets a response. I, I'm sick of, I can't release some of the information, that's what redactions are for. So I'm demanding that, or I'm asking, or I'm requesting that. So I'm demanding that, or I'm asking, or I'm requesting that no later by Friday, someone gets back to her about her child. Redact whatever you have to. Redact her child's name if you have to. Like, would, she needs a response. Um, and with that, since there's always a holdup and there's always an issue why information can't be released to parents for things like that, do we need to change something in the investigation process? Because I'm confused about what the holdup is. And we're, what is the holdup? What step in the investigation process are you on that's holding it up from releasing the information to the parent? Because I don't understand that. Um, the athletic email about the child. So we're not following the MHSA rules and regulations. So I feel that, um, we should probably get involved so we don't have a lawsuit for breaking those. Because with the, with the, um, examples given in what he asked of the board in that email, it looked like, um, not only that, but our tryout guidelines were a little shaky and against MHSA policy. So I feel it would be ben beneficial. And if I have to make a motion on it, I will to allow for the max number of students to be added to the roster effective immediately. So he doesn't miss out on the season. So do we have to motion that or does it? I don't know how that works. It's not our job, Carrie. But you know what? Thank you. But she's not following the policy. Do you want to be sued? Because I don't.
No, you haven't heard from her. You heard tonight so.
I heard, I know that that kid's cut and that there's also two open spots. It doesn't take rocket science.
There was a lot of kids.
It's not rocket science.
But you should listen to other people and then make an opinion.
Okay, but then if there is a lot of kids cut, it doesn't change the fact that we still don't have a full roster.
Do you know that we don't have a full roster?
Yes.
How do you know?
Because there's thirteen kids on the team.
How do you know that? You didn't ask Adri in that. You didn't ask Jamie Damm in that.
Do I need to?
Yes. Yes.
Is that number going to change all of a sudden?
You don't even know if the number is thirteen, Autumn. I just got this email today.
Okay, I'm sure.
Do we know the number?
Here's my.
I, I don't know as of now, but I have a meeting scheduled.
This is a pretty broad motion to allow for the maximum number of students to be added to the roster, which is fifteen, to fill the roster, which is the goal.
Well, I don't even think it, I think that's for the playoffs. I don't think there is a maximum number in the regular season from my, from what his email said. The only restriction was your playoff roster. So at this point, I don't think there is a regulation about how many kids can be on the roster.
Oh, well, we, we don't need cuts.
So I mean, I understand that there's, there's probably extenuating circumstances and, and maybe there's some other reason. Maybe this, maybe there is a legitimate reason. Um, but obviously the, the parent has tried going through the channels and has not um, received satisfactory response. So if there is somebody that needs to be talked to, um, but if we can get a commitment or a response by the end of the week about how this is being either clarification as to, you know, what was said that wasn't correct or any other policy things that we might not, because I mean, perhaps the parent isn't fully informed about everything. You know, they might have caught one part of it and not another part. I'm just, so just by the end of the week, we hear something. Um, can we have a commitment?
Suggesting that Jim report back to us in the next day in an email. What the actual numbers are, just, just so we know.
Yeah, but that.
You have only heard from one person and I, I'm.
I just think it's weird that then he asked to be added to the JV roster. And now there's all of a sudden no room on him for that.
We don't know the full circumstances. We're only hearing what like, like Chuck said, you know, one side. We, they have to do their job.
I'm sure the parents just lie in their emails all the time. Because they have nothing better to do. Then they come sit in a four hour meeting because they have nothing better to do.
Nobody's saying that. I'm just saying it's.
But, but, let's have, let's.
That's fine.
Let's come up with a compromise.
I want to plan because I don't want to be another person up here complaining. I want to plan to amend the situation. And I don't think that's too much to ask.
I don't think we have to make a motion because if the numbers aren't right, he verifies and then we can
take action or the administrators can take action. If they don't take action, then the board can take action. I think that would be a fair summary of it. Does everybody agree?
Yeah.
And we'll get it.
All right.
I'll, I'll look into it tomorrow.
Personally, I'll give it to Jim.
Yeah. And the other one, if we're dogging people about subcommittees and not showing up, I think I've taken a lot of digs on that one. And if you really want to open that can of worms, we can do that. But like you said, but then in the same breath that we all need to get along, I find that very hypocritical. And that's my two cents. This is my board comment. I was quiet while you were dogging me. So Chuck. And the other thing, which I might be late on this one. I don't remember what medium. The substitute teachers, has anyone addressed the substitute teacher issue? Am I a month late and a dollar short on that?
Am I allowed to talk?
Yes, Jim.
Okay.
Well, it was just a question. Is it just a yes or no question?
I'm going to explain it.
Well, then no, I don't need an answer.
No, no, you don't determine whether I talk or not. Here's what happened.
It's my comment though.
But you asked me a question.
And I'm going to answer the question. It has been turned over to all authorities, including. I'm not, I'm not asking that question. You don't even know my.
You just finished your question.
No, I didn't. I said, is that old news or has it been talked about yet? That was my question. Has it been talked about yet? Not what happened.
Has it been talked about?
The substitute issue.
Talked about with who?
That was my question. Has it been talked about?
It has been, it has been talked about.
Okay, um, at the board meeting, um, my timeline's a little off. That's all I'm saying. So alls I want to know is as a permanent solution, we hire an agency right now and they it was stated that you're going to get, I'm going to call them duds in every agency. You never know what you're going to get. So my question is, why are we still outsourcing substitute teachers? Because we never used to do that. Like, is that, is that a requirement or for board? Like?
Yes.
If for.
Carrie, you want to answer that?
So I can tell you that if we had to have staff that was doing the contacting of subs, it, it would be very challenging. It was in the past, Jim. Correct?
Yes.
And then there's a, there's the matter of the cost of doing that, having to have a person to actually reach out, you know, Monday morning at seven o'clock when somebody calls versus an agency that contracts with various.
So you're saying the student safety? You're talking about one unfortunate instance. I'm sorry, I'm talking.
Oh, okay.
Substitutes have to be available.
Maybe we should put on the next agenda.
Jim, am I correct?
You are correct.
And, and if we didn't have a source for that, we would have classrooms that were.
Yes, this is my board comment. So
Did you answer the?
Next agenda. Just put on the next agenda.
I have an additional comment whenever, when everyone's done.
Go ahead, Kim.
Well, Andrea, you had mentioned that we need to be better to each other and you're absolutely right. But I need to tell you, when you suggested that we pick a new board member and let the GISD do it, you said that there were, there were members on this board who had personal agendas. I don't know if you met me or not. I mean, maybe you didn't, but I had no personal agenda in picking Jenny. I don't even, I didn't know her before she comes into the meetings or anything. So that's probably one of the things that needs to stop is you telling people they have personal agendas. I mean, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if you're talking about me, but I was a little bit offended by that.
I said it once. I didn't say it every meeting. But yes, I did say that because three board members all voted exactly the same. We voted for Ken when Ken got on the board. Three, three, I'm just saying that's, that seems very, you absolutely do. You absolutely do. And people ran to be on this board with specific agendas, like literally with agendas.
See, there you go again.
Yeah.
Andrea, am I wrong?
Andrea.
Yeah.
Yes, Andrea.
So.
Andrea, you just made that statement. Who are you referring to?
Autumn. She ran on stopping the sale of the school.
Did you talk to me? Did you talk to any of the constituents that I went out and campaigned? Because since I actually went out and got the affidavit signed so I could be on the ballot, do you remember that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you talked to, what, what addresses? Because I still have the list, so I'd like to know who you talked to. Because I'm calling BS.
Yes. I'm just saying. So I made a comment one time. I didn't specifically make up something about someone and, okay.
And then you, you did try to call, you did try to call out people for making a one-time comment. So obviously it's, it's not, if it's not okay, it's not okay.
One-time comment.
It doesn't matter. If it's, if it's not okay, it's not okay. So let's not.
And what, and what did you run for, Andrea, then?
Yeah, let's just, yeah, let's, let's just, yeah, let's just drop it. We don't need to be making personal attacks. It isn't moving us forward. It's not repairing relationships. It's not helping us be more effective. We don't need to nitpick at each other over.
For, for sure, for sure.
So here's the thing. So if you, in the interest of keeping these meetings civil and not embarrassing ourselves on camera and in front of our audience, if you have an issue with a particular board member and a statement that they made at a meeting, it would probably be more appropriate to address that with the particular person that made the comment instead of airing the dirty laundry.
It's not airing dirty laundry when you need to correct what someone says about you at the public meeting. Like specifically about you.
I know.
I'm going to, I'm going to actually finish it up and I'm going to be a little. Are you okay, Ken? I ain't got it right now because here we go. I, I was trying to be a very good, good person, but Andrea did attack me just now. He said, no, he said a comment directly about me. And I remember five months ago, very specifically, when I did vote for Ken and I said that we should follow policies and procedures, which we don't have to get a board member, because I want Neola. And you sat right there and said, okay, Chuck, we're just going to go to the GISD. Are you happy? I never even suggested that. Go back to the tape and look at it. You took a dig at me and I just like saying, can we have some quorum here and how are we going to vote? So that's my first, my first thing. I'm going to move on because that's, it's water underneath the bridge. So just please don't throw stones because there's a lot of stones to throw back. Um, next meeting, I would like to get rid of Delaporte attorneys. Okay? I don't want to make a motion at a board comment. I'll put it on the agenda. Um, Josh Davis's OMA has got to be looked at. So I'm going to ask the board to approve looking into this OMA next month if that's okay with everybody. I'm going to put that on the agenda. Um, simplified Roberts rules of order. I'd like to institute that because we don't have any parliamentary procedure here. I've tried to institute it two or three times as a trustee and vice president. So I would like to institute that with board approval next month. Simplified Roberts rules, uh, the coaches. Um, I'm not going to take a side on this because I really don't know the numbers and that's why I think it would be fair for Jim or somebody, and I'm not taking anybody's side. Just, just give me the numbers.
I don't expect you to take my side.
No, no, I know that. But I said, I want to be factual and I want to know the numbers of what we have and what Mr., I believe his name was Horton said, if I'm not mistaken. Yes. And so I think, I think that's, that's fair to do for that. And then the lady, and I'm not going to mention her name. I, uh, uh, Ken said she could, but the lady's daughter that was knocked unconscious and then couldn't go in the ambulance, that's an EMS issue probably, but I don't know that. So I'm not going to defend anybody. I, everybody's mad that a teacher went or somebody from the staff, but I'm kind of glad that they did just to make sure she was okay and we get an, uh, an upline or update on it. Um, uh, Jennifer stated some good comments. I don't know if that's true with the buses or not. So could you, Jim, as a, and Dave, figure out if we are in compliance with the law? Because I did not know that. I, I don't know if we are now. I just, it's a comment that needs to be. Okay. Yeah. Okay, just, I just want to make sure. So we're not, we're not harming anybody. And, um, and Josh, I know that. Uh, I think you guys planned this for me to have a long meeting on my first meeting. And, uh, that's okay. And my last statement is, I typed this up this morning. Uh, I need to speak briefly about the document of allegations that was recently released and publicly circulated, uh, last meeting. I want the community to know that this is clear, this, this clearly, this, this has many statements in it and docu, and the document is false. Others exaggerated and some concern personal matters outside of school business that have been misrepresented. What is equally concerning is the process behind the document. It was created without my knowledge, shared among multiple staff members for edits and additions, and then selectively distributed, selectively distributed. I was never contacted to veri, verify, respond this or correct anything. The fact that unverified inaccurate information is released without redaction has caused personal and professional harm. I am in the process of taking the appropriate steps to have the record corrected and determine how and why this occurred. Those responsible for the improper creation, release of this material will be held accountable through the proper legal and administrative channels, not through personal retaliation, but through established procedures that ensure transparency and fairness to everyone. I want to sincerely thank all the community members who have supported me throughout this situation. Your support means more than you know to me. Regardless, I remain committed to serving the students and community of Schwartz Creek with integrity and will continue doing the job as I was elected to do. I appreciate the community's patience and situation and that make sure this is addressed properly and professionally. And, um, I, uh, I want to thank everybody that stayed. And I want to thank you for my first meeting. I know it was a little rough, but we had probably more genimes than we've had in the last several months, along with a hearing that took two hours. So I'm an hour off. We would have been done at nine o'clock. I think if we went from six to nine, right? No, it went from seven to one. So I would have been ten o'clock right now. I'm an hour off.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, a couple of things that were, that were going to be discussed later is, um, are you moving the committee meeting from the ninth to the eighth?
Um, great question. That'd be my last comment without, without any
It's, it's okay.
Objection to Jenny.
Okay.
Maybe we'll do it the Thursday before or something or pick a date. So can we get with you soon in the next couple of days and we'll work out our agree, our arrangements? Because I'm in full agreement about that. But with that being said, that's it. Thank you, Sue. Is there anything else I forgot?
Um, you, are you discussing the payment for out of state travel? Is that the next board meeting you're discussing that? Okay.
Yeah, we're going to put that on the agenda. I want, I.
And that's starting at seven, the next board meeting, starting at seven?
Yeah. Did I miss one item tonight?
Yes.
It's starting at seven because.
Oh, yeah. We can't close.
We have a whole nother closed session.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's on negotiation. So the public can leave. That's why Ken wanted it moved.
Yes.
So we're done with our open meeting.
Right. You have to vote to go to a closed session.
Moved. Yeah, we're going to say about, we're just going to close the general membership or normal membership.
No, we can't.
Oh, no. Okay. We'll make a motion to go into closed sessions.
Yeah.
So moved.
Yeah, no, for why?
For the purpose of negotiations, OMA fifteen point two six eight, section eight C, uh, for negotiations.
Okay. Who's, who made the motion?
I actually made it.
At what time?
At eleven oh two.
And Andrea, did you second that or who seconded?
She did. Oh, you made it? You made the motion. I seconded it. I'm not supposed to second it, but that's okay.
All right, I can second it. It's better.
Okay.
All right. Ken Engel.
Yes.
Jenny Waghast. Yes. Chuck Mauckey.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Tim Winter.
And then when we come back, I'm sorry.
Andrea Fick. Seven, yes.
When we come back, I'll reclose the meeting. When we come back, out of closed session. Okay, the public.